The June 9th City Council Meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Father Goodwin, pastor Our Lady Fatima Catholic Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Father Annie.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. God, our Father, we thank you for the gift of the day. We thank you for the lives to which our own are bound. We pray today in a special way for the success of the deliberation and implementation of this City Council session. We pray for all the elected civil officials in our city who are entrusted to guard our political welfare. May they be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Colorado, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott.
President.
Councilmember Hoyt.
President.
Councilmember Lundey. Councilmember Parker. Councilmember Rafferty.
President.
President Proton Roberson.
President.
Councilmember Scales. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
President.
The minutes are not ready from March 17th through June 2nd. Let's do the consideration of consent agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with items three and four. On page three, we have items five through nine on consent. On page four, we have items 10 through 13 on consent. On page five, we have item number 14 on consent. Page six, we have items 18, 20, and 21 on consent. Page seven, we have items 23 through 26 on consent. And on page eight, we have items 27 through 31 on consent. Page nine, we have item number 33 on consent, and we have three addendum items.
Yes. All right. Do we have any council members? Council Rafferty?
Thank you. Page three, item nine, I'd like to remove from consent.
Okay.
Page three.
Page three, item nine. What else?
On page five, I'd like to consent items 15, 16, and 17.
Okay. Five, 15, 16, and 17.
Leave 17 on.
Okay.
Okay.
On page six, I would like to consent item 19.
Okay.
And then, on page nine, I'd like to consent item 32. And I wanted to ask, had item 34, was that, has that gone?
It hasn't been.
Okay, then I'll leave it as it is. And on page 10, consent item 36. And on the addendum, item 37.
Okay.
Where's the addendum?
That's the Planet Technologies, what we discussed last night.
Let me check.
All right. Do you have any other members which speak to the consent agenda? Mr. President? Mr. Proton? Page nine, item 32, was that, is that going through committee? Item 32, yes, that came through yesterday. Okay. Thank you. That's on consent. All right. Do you have any other items? Let me see. Council Tyson. What item?
It says.
It says. It's not. It's not on there.
All right. I'll go through the consent agenda one more time, real quick. Page two, items three and four on consent. Page three, item five through eight are on consent. Item nine was removed from consent. Page four, item 10 through 13. Page five, item 14. Item 15 and 16 were added to consent. Page six, item 18, 19 was, was 19 added to consent?
Yes.
Yes. 19 was added to consent. Then 20 and 21. Page seven, item 23 through 26 are on consent. Page eight, item 27 through 31 are on consent. Page nine, item 32 was added to consent. Item 33 is on consent. Page 10, item 36 was added to consent. And then the addendum item 37 was added to the consent agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing, you may now approach the podium. Do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'll move the item.
Second. Abbott Roberson.
Okay. Voting should be open. Councilmember Tyson, Proton Roberson.
They didn't come up on my screen, Mr. Clerk.
Probably log out and log back in, should pop in.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, sir. That vote should be up.
That item passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk, do you have the names for those boards and agencies that we need to appoint?
Councilor Rafferty here. The board, the flight.
Yeah, the.
I mean, Museum, she has the names.
I have all the names.
Okay. Let's do item 22.
22? All right. Item 22, a resolution appointing three members to the Board of Directors. Oh, not that one. Councilor Hoyt, that's your item, right?
Okay.
Do you have the names?
I do have the names.
Okay. Resolutions appointing three members to the Board of Directors of Special Care Facilities Finance Authority of the City of Birmingham, St. Martin's in the Pines. One term expiring November 9th, 2015. One term expiring November 14th, 2017. And one term expiring November the 11th, 2019.
President?
Yes.
Remove the item.
Let me read the names.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. The first one is William Travis McCowen III. His term would expire November the 9th, 2015. Cameron Vow. Term would expire the November the 14th, 2017. And Heger L. Hill Senior. And his term would expire November the 11th, 2019. And these are self-appointed boys.
All right. Do you have any other names to be added in nomination? We'll close on those. We have a mover in a second.
Okay. Voting should be open. Councilmember. You still out?
I'm updating.
Okay. I would like to vote.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. That vote should be up.
All right. That item passes unanimously. Item 35, Mr. Clerk.
Item 35. Item 35, which is on page number nine. A resolution appointing 29 regular members and six annual members to the Southern Museum of Flight Board of Directors. 10 regular members with a term to expire October 12th, 2015. Nine regular members with a term to expire October 14th, 2016. And 10 regular members with a term to expire October 13th, 2017. And six annual members to expire October 12th, 2015.
All right. Councilor Rafferty?
Yeah. Hold on, I just want to get these last three names. Okay. Got them all. I move the item?
Second.
Okay. And for the terms expiring October 12th, 2015, I have George Anderson, Ann Hooks, Gary Nash, Raymond Ross, Ken Copeland, Alan Mosley, Dr. George Petsnick, Billy Singleton, Logan Smith, M.D., and Austin Landry. For the term expiring October 14th, 2016, I have Chuck Connor, Connie Logan, Jim Thompson Esquire, Colonel Jack Martin, A. Paige Sloss Jr., William H. Barnes, Gregory J. Despinakis, Hank Collins, and Herb Rosmeals. For a term expiring October 13th, 2017, I have Ruby Archie, Holly Rowe, Lindbergh Sanders, Connor Warren, Thomas F. Talbot, Albert Allenback, Paul Moppen, Ken Key, Robert Jacques, Jay Miller. And then the six annual members that will serve until October 12th, 2015, I have Randall Whitehouse, Stephen Allen Jr., Beverly Baker Esquire, William Moran, Marlon Priest, and Bobby Lot Jr. And this is a self-appointed board.
All right. Do we have any other names to be submitted in nomination? We close on those names. We have a mover in a second. We're ready to vote.
I move approval.
Second.
Voting should be open. Still updating?
Yeah, he's updating. He just updated.
Yes. Councilor Hoyt?
Yes.
Okay. That vote should be up.
All right. That item passes. Those members will be nominated. Item 38, Mr. Clerk.
All right. 38, it's on page, addendum item. Page, item number 38. A resolution appointing five members to the Commercial Development Authority. Two members for a term expiring March 15th, 2019. And three members for a term expiring March 15th, 2017.
All right. It's submitted by Council Lundey, but I have the names. The, for the terms expiring March 15th, 2019, Marklin Sigler and Curtis Hammond. For the terms expiring March 15th, 2017, Brandon Wilson, Deontay Gordon, and Kelvin Johnson. Move those.
Second.
All right. Do you have any other names to be submitted into nomination? We'll close on those nominations. We're ready to vote.
All right. Voting should be up. Councilman Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilman Hoyt? Okay. That vote should be up.
Items pass. Next, item 39, Mr. Clerk.
Item 39. A resolution appointing five members to the Industrial Development Board. One member for a term expiring April 10th, 2016. And one member for a term expiring April 10th, 2018. And three members for a term expiring April 10th, 2020.
Okay. I have those names, too. For April 10th, 2016, Kirk Atkinson. For April 10th, 2018, Marlon J. King. For, and then the three for April 10th, 2020, Willie Casey, Keith Foster Jr., and Diane Rohr. Move the item.
Second.
All right. Do you have any other names to be submitted to nomination? We'll close on those. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
All right. Voting should be open. Same?
Yes.
That vote should be up.
Those items pass, or that item passes. Call up item one and two, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Items one and two. Item one, a resolution relative to the application, Marie O. Sims LLC for a club liquor class two license to be used at Pearl Lounge, 3132 Boise Avenue, Birmingham, in the hearing of partnership parties. Item two, a resolution relative to application, Marie O. Sims LLC for a Division One dance permit to be used at the Pearl Lounge, 3132 Boise Avenue, Birmingham, in the hearing of partnership parties. Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing with respect to these item one and item two. If, I'm going to ask that Officer, I mean Detective Patterson would come and give us. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, we have an application for a club liquor class two license for the Pearl Lounge, 3132 Boise Avenue. This application is also in conjunction with a Division One dance permit. Mr. Chairman, at 3132 Boise Avenue, there were no incidents in the past six months.
All right. The applicant here, would you come and state your name and address? And tell us what you want us to know?
Merrick Sims, 3132 Boise Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, 35221.
Okay. What are you proposing to do, sir?
Going from a public license to a private license.
And what would a private license allow you to do?
To control the age atmosphere of the customers.
So, more with adult?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I want you to have a seat on the front row. Is there anyone here to speak for against this item? If you would, need to come down?
This is going to be a private club? Are those club licenses?
Uh huh. State your name and address, sir.
My name is Willie Kay, Vice President of Germania Park.
Hey, pull your mic up, sir. Pull your mic up. Microphone, pull your microphone up. I'm sorry.
Yes. The reason I'm here, that we were misrepresented on the license that they was going, that you were going to give them. And our, they told us it was just going to be a private club license with no dancing and, and it came back that they were going to have a strip club license. And we don't want it in the neighborhood because we have a daycare down there. We have gas stations and people living in there. And I don't think it would be a good idea for.
Okay. How close is the daycare to this?
Daycare, I'd say about a half a block.
Half a block? Is that more than a thousand feet?
Less than a thousand.
Less than a thousand? Okay. Do we have someone from zoning? Mr. McGee, can you speak to this?
Tom.
Says on Boise Avenue. Mr. McGee? Somebody from zoning could speak for this? You don't know anything about it? Okay.
But, like I said, it's another, we have too many bars around the night that shoot, shoot them up every weekend. And we don't want that kind of atmosphere in the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Detective Patterson, in your investigation, did you make note of a daycare and proximity?
Mr. Chairman, there is a child care. He was misrepresented. This is not going to be, in layman's terms, a strip club. It will have adult, it's an adult establishment, club liquor class two, but it will be dancing between patrons.
Okay. Okay. Well, and give me your name again, sir. Your last name?
Kay, Willie Kay.
Mr. Kay, I think what is happening with some of these licenses, that if they don't get a private license, then the 19-year-olds and the 20-year-old, 20-year-old can come into the club and they trying to control that crowd.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
So that might, you know, and of course it's left up to the council, but that might be a benefit, you know, going forward, I would think.
Yes, but a club, I thought it would be a building, but not, you take a house and turn it into a club.
So this is a house?
This is a house.
Is it zoned properly?
Yes.
Okay. So it is zoned properly? So evidently, your neighborhood at some point decided that it was okay? And that's, that's what we have to understand about zoning. You know, when you change, it's in perpetuity. It being continues. And so, you know, when our friends come, I'm just not, I'm just speaking. But sometime when our friends come and they want to open up a club and, because we like them, we allow them to, we change the zoning, you know, for them, but you don't, but you're not realizing, you change it for anybody who comes after them as well. And so, we in a quagmire, quite frankly. And, but I hear you, but we really don't have a basis to deny because he's in, he's conformative.
Yeah.
And he's, and he's really, he's really trying to control this crowd. And I, you know, where you know better, you do better.
Yeah. Like I was saying, there's a lot of clubs trying to control their crowd. But when you wake up at night and you see people running down the street shooting and everything, he's not controlling anything.
Okay. Well, then we need some police reports.
Well, hey, you call the police, but you get, you never see the police. So, it's like in these neighborhoods, police call when they feel like coming.
Well, that's a matter of the chief and, you know, to deal with that, your time, your time is up, I'm being told. And so, we've heard from you. Is anyone else? Go ahead. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak to this item? For against? Okay. Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is where I want to give some clarity, if you don't mind. When this item first came up, it was deferred, I think, a couple of dates. It came up as a Division, Dance Permit Division, I think, two license. And that was where, you know, there was some concerns that this might be an adult entertainment type of establishment. And so, it was delayed. Mr. Chairman, as you're aware of, came back to your committee for consideration. And it's now come forth as a Division One Dance Permit, which is just for patrons. I will say that a couple of weeks ago, I went to the Germania Park Neighborhood Association meeting with President Gibson, Mr. Kay, the Vice President, who just spoke with concerns that it was a Division Two Dance Permit, which allowed adult entertainment. And Mr. Sims, I'm glad that you're here today. We've got that cleared up. And, and to the neighbors there in Germania Park, Mr. Kay, the Vice President, this is now just an adult, dancing for patrons that are actually attending the club. It's not adult entertainment, or in other terms, a strip joint. So, that gives me a sense of comfort. I do hear Mr. Kay's concerns with the issues related to some incidents in the area. Hopefully, Mr. Sims, and I know Lily Pearl, that this will be a well-established establishment and you all will keep it within class and good quality, so all citizens can attend and be proud of what you have established within the community. I'm fine now, Mr. Kay, now that we've gotten some clarity on the dance license and permit that will be established here for this establishment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Councilor Tyson? Oh, you.
Councilor Abbott.
Oh, Councilor Abbott, I can't see that.
Well, he's got the list and you've got the floor. Well, I wanted to ask the applicant, if you could please come back to the microphone? Since this is going to be a private club license and guests who are on your list can bring people of any age to the club, including children, I want to hear about how you're going to control your membership and how you're going to control the ages of the people, the guests that your membership bring to the club.
You have to be 25 years of age to be a member. We have a police officer that's on staff, that's on duty, and he has a security staff that's there. They check all IDs of patrons entering the club, and they must be 25 to enter. We do serve food. So, you know, customers can come and buy food, but you have to be 25 years of age to be a member.
Okay. So, tell me about how you're, like, you have a Board of Directors, right?
Yes.
And you have a membership process? So, what are people going to have to bring to, to prove that they're able to be a member of your club? And you still haven't stopped underage people from coming in because your, your members can bring guests?
Well, the members, they, they have to be recommended by a member, and they have to be voted on by a board of members.
So they're going to have a pledge not to ever bring any underage people to the club?
Yes. That's part of the bylaws.
Okay. Well, that sounds good. And tell me about your security that you're going to have?
I have an on-duty police officer that's there. And we have security in the front and the back. We, we check patrons when they come in. The males are padded down, the women purses are checked. And they must show their ID to the security officer before they enter, and to the bartender.
Okay. And tell, tell us who your members of your Board of Directors are?
My mother, my sister, and my aunt.
Your mother, your sister, and your aunt?
Yes.
Family affair. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. You're welcome. Any more? Okay. Councilor Rafferty?
Thank you very much. And I did not see a copy of the bylaws or anything in the packet. So, when are the monthly meetings? And what are the membership fees?
We have a monthly meeting. Membership fees are $25 a year.
And if somebody comes to the door with a guest, you're saying you would turn the member away and tell them they would, at the next membership meeting, they would have to get the guest approved to enter?
Say it again?
Okay. You stated that a guest would have to be voted on to gain entrance to the facility.
No, a guest would have to be, to be a member, you have to be voted on and fill out an application by another member.
Okay. And guest access is designated how?
Members can bring two guests on their pass, and they have to be 25 years of age.
Okay. And is that in your bylaws? Have you passed your bylaws?
Yes. I sent them to the City Council.
Okay. And Detective Patterson, I have one more question about, I know he stated security. Did you state that the police were checking IDs?
I do have an officer there. He's normally at the front door as well.
Okay. I was. I thought that the police couldn't check the IDs. I just need clarification on that one.
The officer cannot check IDs at that location. It would have to be his other security staff.
Okay. Thank you. And then also, under, and I'm assuming that you've reviewed the Kevin Felder ordinance portion of this, and he's in full compliance?
Right. He provided a bullet point security plan.
Okay. It just wasn't in the agenda, so I couldn't review the document. Okay. Thank you.
Question, any other? Councilor Tyson?
So, Councilor Hoyt, he has everything that he needs in order to open up this establishment. Councilor Hoyt? He has everything he need to open up this?
Yes. We vetted this in committee, and, and based on what he applied for, I think would be some, of some benefit to the community and the fact that he is limiting who has access to the, to the club.
Well, is this, the club is behind the service station in the rental center place? Yeah. So this is a new process that y'all are doing?
Can you step to the mic, sir?
Yes, we have a public license now, and I want to change that from public to a private so that I can control the age and the atmosphere.
Okay. And I, and I can't vote on this anyway for personal reasons.
Okay. All right. Any other? Any other further discussion? Yes, Councilor.
Just one thing that I left off, and I understand your application's in order, and you, you've jumped through all the hoops, but please don't think that a private license gives you more control. It actually gives you more freedom to allow underage drinkers into the building. A, a, a public, you are more beholden to keep it at the legal drinking age. But in a private club, you can open the door to anyone. And even though it may stated in your bylaws, you can still renege on what you've said to us today, as far as limiting it to twenty-five years and older. I just, I wanted the public to understand that, that this is not, this is not a control mechanism, as much as it actually allows you more freedom on who you allow and what you do with your club.
But let me just say, if you choose to do the latter, you won't have a club. How about that? Okay? Because I'd be the first one to try to pull them, quite frankly. But, um, but I'm hoping that, um, that you co-mingle, I mean, you coexist with the community, and that you're mindful that you are in a neighborhood, and so that, um, you know, those, those things are always before you. But, um, I'm ready to consider this license. Mr. President, I'm gonna turn it back over, you can maybe see this, sir.
All right, we have a move in a second. It's clear.
We need one.
Second, I saw that.
Second.
Okay.
Voting should be open. Now. Councilmember. All right, that vote should be up.
That item passes with two abstentions. All right, we're gonna, uh, come back to the agenda. We hear from the mayor. Ni hao, Mr. Mayor.
Ni hao. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilors. Today, we have with us a number of individuals from the Department of Justice, along with some, some other organizations. For some time now, the city of Birmingham has been engaged with the Justice Department and, uh, a number of other organizations to look at, uh, our policing policies, uh, establishing programs to curb violence in the community, and a number of other issues related to crime. This morning, we have with us, um, as I said before, representatives from the Department of Justice. And the city of Birmingham is proud to host the Department of Justice, along with criminal justice expert, experts from John Jay College, Yale Law School, UCLA, and the Urban Institute. We look forward to sharing our best practices and understanding areas, uh, that could be improved, uh, in the area of, uh, community policing. Leaders from throughout our community, along with our residents and law enforcement agencies, will be on hand for the next two days to participate in focus groups to identify needs and problems. Chief A.C. Roper is here this morning, uh, to introduce our guests and to give us a, a brief on their visit. Chief?
Thank you so much, Mayor, to the council. It is an honor to be here this morning, and we have some very distinguished guests with us. As was previously announced, Birmingham was selected as one of six, uh, national pilot sites for the National Initiative, the National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice. So we have a team here over the next two days for that. But it's also converging with the Violence Reduction Initiative that we rolled out last week, and some of you were, were at a meeting where you were updated on that. And so we have Dr. David Kennedy here, who wrote the book, Don't Shoot, and who's with the John Jay College of Criminal Justice, who's also working with us on the, on the community trust piece. So we think it's a great period for the Birmingham Police Department and the city of Birmingham, because we want to relentlessly pursue excellence. And so I think we have the people here with us over the next couple of days that's gonna help us lay out the groundwork for the next three years for this National Institute, National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice. And so I'm gonna call up, uh, Dr. Tracy Cassie. She's the project manager, uh, for the National Initiative, and she'll do some introductions, then we'll have Dr. David Kennedy come forward.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Mayor, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm, I'm Dr. Tracy Cassie, and I am the project director for the National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice. I'm gonna do a brief introduction of the team that has traveled to Birmingham today. And then, as you heard the chief speak, I'm gonna have David Kennedy do, um, just a brief synopsis about what the National Initiative is about. So, um, behind me, against the wall there, is gonna be my team, and as I just call their name, they'll just wave to you as opposed to all coming forth. Um, of course, the first is David Kennedy, representing, uh, John Jay College and the National Initiative, the National Network for Safe Communities. He's also the overall director of the National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice.
Uh, good doctor, if, if I might interrupt you.
Sure.
This is being televised, and so the, um, audience that are watching, they see the live stream on TV, they won't be able to see them.
Oh, okay.
So if you would, just let them come forward.
Oh, absolutely, we certainly can do that. So, and I'll have David Kennedy come forward. So we will kind of storm the stage here, as we say. Um, Jesse Janetta is with the Urban Institute. Isella Bueno- Buenuelos is also with the Urban Institute. Chris Moulton is with the Center for Policing Equity out of UCLA. Megan Quattlebaum is with the Yale Law School. Mildred Dupree DuRobles is with the Community Relations Service out of DOJ. And Shanae Bentley is Administrative Research Assistant out of, um, John Jay. Do I, do I need somebody on the other side, or are they out of camera range? You can tell we don't do on-camera, you need to come in a little bit. They're, they're giving me directions, so everyone needs to sort of move in, because we're live. We're live, so this group needs to come in just a little bit as well. Okay. In, in frame, as they say, I guess, in frame. Oh, so you could do a selfie, is that what that, okay. Gotcha, all right. Um, again, thank you, and, and we're so very pleased to be here. And I'm gonna turn it over to David Kennedy, who will give you just a brief outline of, uh, what the National Initiative is about. So thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilors. So my name's David Kennedy. Um, I, I love the battlefield promotion, I am not in fact a doctor. And since I belong to a great university, I try to reserve that for people who punch their ticket properly. Uh, I have put my time in, on the street, and I'll, I'll vouch for that one. So I am in fact a professor, I'm in the Criminal Justice Department at John Jay. I run the National Network for Safe Communities out of John Jay. And out of the National Network, we are also one of the outside partners working with the Justice Department on this very important National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice. So I'm actually, um, in relationship with Birmingham in two different ways. So one is that, starting late last year, we began a conversation with Birmingham about implementing what we call the Group Violence Initiative, which is, uh, a way of addressing the most serious community violence that goes back twenty years right now. We hosted a delegation in the fall, I think it was, for a couple of days at, at John Jay, which was very impressive and went extremely well. Out of that, we've been doing work with the city that culminated just this past week in the first, uh, group member call-in. So we don't use the gang word, it doesn't mean that much to us or others anymore. But the fact is, in any city, most of the serious violence is driven by, you know, high-rate groups in the community. We know now that when you engage with those groups in the right way, you can not only bring crime down, but you can help people turn their lives around, keep them out of prison. And critically, and this will be a bridge to the, the next part of the conversation, really begin to reset relationships between law enforcement and, um, what are often very alienated communities. My team was on the ground for the call-in last week, and I am happy to report that they are very rigorous, very skeptical, have very high standards, which is why I have them do this work. And they reported that this call-in was one of, if not the best such launches they have ever seen. So that's really good news, and I've been talking to your, your law enforcement folks since I, I've been here this morning. Group members are already coming forward and asking for services, and the buzz on the street, which we, we listen for at this moment, is already there saying, this is real, this is important, we should pay attention to it. Which, before one starts to see any kind of violence reduction trends in, in the crime numbers, this sense from the streets that something important is happening is what we look for, and you are seeing it here. So that's really great news. I'm also working with the city through the Justice Department and this outside team on the National Initiative. And we are genuinely honored to be working with Birmingham on this, and let me start with that. It can be an awkward thing when the government in the United States comes calling and says, we want to talk to you about police community relations. All right, so let me be explicit about what is and is not happening here. This is not DOJ or any of us on the outside saying, this is a city with a huge problem, and we want to help you with it. It is not in the context of formal investigation or supervision, it is not leading to formal investigation or supervision. The National Initiative was actually framed by the Justice Department well before Ferguson and the moment that we're in, because these issues that we're all looking at now have been with us for a long time. But Ferguson and what's happened since has greatly elevated them in the national consciousness. I think that's a good thing, these are issues that deserve attention, and they need lots more eyes and, and minds on them. But the National Initiative was ready and waiting for that. And we, we now think that this is a once-in-a-lifetime, once-in-several-generations opportunity. I've been doing this work, which focuses on violence and police community relations and over-incarceration and that whole suite of issues for thirty years now. And this is the first time either that the attention of the nation has been focused on these issues, uh, or that, and I'm speaking for myself now, I've ever felt that there's a real opportunity to turn the corner. I think that opportunity is there. One of the main elements in that is the DOJ National Initiative. It's not the only thing going on out there, but it is a deliberate, focused attempt to make headway on these issues. And we looked for cities that we could work with, who we were convinced were serious, really wanted to do this work, had the, the civic and law enforcement and community capacity and commitment to show the country that in real time, we could make real headway on these issues. Birmingham was one of those, we're delighted that you wanted in. I am personally delighted that in the decision process, you came out as one of the partners. We expect, over the next couple of years, to work with you, first and foremost, to make headway in resetting these relationships he- here in your city. But in a larger way, to show the rest of the country and help them see that one can really do this work, because we're convinced that one can. And the National Initiative has these six cities, it's got an associated research agenda, it's got what DOJ calls a clearinghouse function, so that lessons learned and the basic framework that will be developed out of the on-the-ground work can be given away to others. We've already got the phones ringing, saying, whatever it is they're getting, we want it too, and we're gonna try to help with that. But the three main elements that we will, will plan to work on are as follows. So one is what the academic community is now calling procedural justice and legitimacy. And the simple version is, if people don't feel like they're being treated well by the police and other elements of the criminal justice system, um, they do not feel respected, they do not feel like their interests have been honored, they do not feel like they're being listened to, and we now know as a matter of real social science, they are less likely to obey the law, they are less likely to comply, they are more likely to commit crimes. Um, and they're even less likely to participate with their own communities around general crime prevention activities. And we also know for a fact now that relatively simple interventions, such as officer training, can help them deal with the public in different ways and lead to quite remarkably better outcomes. So we want to work on procedural justice. We want every contact between, say, a police officer and a member of the public to reinforce the idea that that person is respected, that that person is a citizen, and that with citizenship come obligations. We want all of that to be steadily supported in our daily work. We know, this is the second plank, that we all have biases. Many, many in law enforcement now, these days, for a long time, they're accused of being racist, right? Bad things are happening because they're racist. I don't actually see a lot of racism in line law enforcement. And, bear with me. I see lots of bad decisions, I see lots of racially disparate outcomes. And nobody is going to deny the existence of racism, that's there. But when whole communities feel like they are being oppressed, there often is something else going on. And what we know is going on is that you don't have to have racism to have bias. We all have biases. We have mental shortcuts, we have habits of mind, we're constantly inundated with toxic images, we absorb those things. And when we have to make critical decisions, we can make very bad critical decisions without actually having personal animus. And we know that what's called implicit bias can be identified, can be trained against, can be selected against. And we know, for example, that officers who've been on the job for a long time make better shoot-don't-shoot decisions than civilians who go through the same simulations. Their professional training makes them better than they would be otherwise. And we think we can do a lot better in addressing and controlling implicit bias. And the third element is what's being called reconciliation. So I work largely in deeply alienated African-American communities, and their toxic experience with the police and law enforcement is nothing recent. It goes back in the collective memory of the community to transportation, to slavery, to slave-catching, to Reconstruction, to Jim Crow, to the Black Codes, to dogs and fire hoses being set on peaceful civil rights demonstrators. This has been going on a long time. Much of what they have experienced since the formal civil rights revolution of the nineteen-sixties, they have not experienced as respectful and supportive. And reconciliation says it is possible to step back from the critical incidents and the day-to-day work, to recognize that history, to recognize the deeply damaged relationships that have come from that, and to say, as police officers and the head of the FBI and my commissioner in New York, Bill Bratton, are now saying in public, and I'll misquote Bill, but it's something like the following. "The worst things that the black community in America has experienced, it would not, could not have experienced unless it had been imposed on them by American police departments." And that's true, that is a matter of historical reality. And when police chiefs and police agencies do not feel and act like that anymore and wish to do better, acknowledging what has happened and honoring it and naming it and being certain that that history is understood and that the commitment to doing better is explicit, we think can be very important. So the National Initiative is framed around these ideas of procedural justice, implicit bias, and reconciliation, and we will be working with you, and I want to emphasize "with" in real partnership, over the next three years, to try to show us and you and the rest of the country that this is real work, that real people can do and generate real results, so thank you.
Mr. Protan?
Thank you, David.
I have a question.
Before you open it up, uh, and, and David, if you could remain there, this is just one initiative, in our long-term effort to, uh, reduce crime in the community. In order to have true community policing, you've gotta have trust in the community. And this initiative is to assist us in building that trust, to give our officers the proper training, which, uh, I believe we already are, but there's always room for improvement, a- and to really look at the, um, data to make a determination as to what's the most effective way to reduce crime in our community. crime in our community. But also, on the other side, there has to be some avenue by which individuals who are involved in crime have the ability to turn their lives around and have the ability to get access to second chances, so to say. So it's my hope that through working with David and the entire organization and the Department of Justice with our police department, that we can look at those best practices in community policing and become a model for the rest of the country in our efforts. But also to look at those resources that we can bring to bear to assist individuals to turn their lives around. Now, we'll open it up for questions that you might have for David.
Yes, let me thank you for coming this morning, and thank the mayor for bringing you and your team. But my question is, have you been made aware of the initiatives that the council, many of the councils have with respect to trying to reduce crime in this community?
I'm going to say that I don't think we have yet. And this is part of why we're here.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have several councils. Council Roberson has a kid, what is the?
Hundred Days of Nonviolence.
And of course, Council Tyson has a program that she's been working with in her community. And of course, I have Part of What the Purpose, which is a national-recognized, number-one neighborhood program in the United States of America. We won national twice for the crime fighting things that we deal with Part of What the Purpose. And even this morning, you would see that some of our recipients have a scholarship program that we are trying to educate our young folk and participate in their learning, their academic experience. But I just think it's important. We know that Chief has been really proactive when it comes to community policing in this community, and we thank him for that. But I was trying to see, what could we expect different than what Chief is doing now that would further engage police in the community? Because I also want you to be aware that there's been some discussion about limiting, you know, police access with respect to various initiatives that we have. And so just want to know, is that going to have some bearing on relationship? Because I think more often you see police not necessarily arresting folk, but actually engage in the community, then that, you know, brings about some sense of civility, if you will. And so I'm just trying to see what we can expect difference. And if you have these partnerships, what do those partnerships consist of? You know, so that I understand.
Let me take it as best I can from the beginning of your question. So I'm going to say for a fact, no, we don't know everything that's been going on in Birmingham, beginning with the council and spreading out from there. We know that. That's some of the work that's beginning, literally, on this trip, and why there's a long run-up to any new work that we might bring to bear. We need to understand all of that, and we'll do certainly better than we are right now by the time we get going. So let me give you an example of something that I expect will happen. So I've been very clear to emphasize that we, meaning both the outside team and the Justice Department, are not going to impose anything, right? Anything that happens here will happen because Birmingham thinks it makes sense. So I'm not even in a position to say right now, "Here's what will happen." We will work that out collectively. But here's something that's pretty likely to happen. In Chicago, nearly every member of the Chicago Police Department has now been put through a one-day in-service training on procedural justice. So this is not an academy introduction. It's taught by seasoned officers to seasoned officers. And we and the Yale team here had a hand in developing that. It's been very successful in Chicago. It's gone to California, where they modified it. So in Oakland and some other places, they picked up the Chicago version. They looked at it, said, "We actually want community people in here teaching the community side of this." They've incorporated that. And this has made national news recently, because Kamala Harris, the Attorney General for the State of California, picked up the Oakland version and is now making it available to every agency, as I understand it, across the state of California. So this has gone from idea to a pretty big deal in very short order. And it's turning out to be very effective at helping line officers understand how it is they inadvertently, deeply offend the public that they police. So if I have a minute, I'll tell you a quick story out of this, which is, the training officers in Chicago will say to the police, "They hate us out there. We know it. They throw bottles at us. We don't get it, because we know why we're on the job. We will literally take a bullet for these folks, and they hate us, and we don't understand it." And the training officers then say to the police in the room, "Think back to the last homicide scene you attended, and there's a victim on the ground, we're all milling around. On the other side of the yellow crime tape is his family and neighbors and members of the community. When they look across the tape, what do they see us doing?" And in every room full of police officers that I've asked this question, everybody looks stricken, and somebody says they see us laughing. Now, this is what first responders do. Surgeons do it, firefighters do it, police officers at the scene do it. And they don't do it because they think that it's funny that there's been a killing. They do it to keep the trauma at bay. But suddenly, these officers in Chicago understand how they are playing into the very worst images that the community has about how they utterly, utterly, utterly disregard the public. And so now, police officers in Chicago don't act like that. So it's a small example, but it represents something big. And my, one real possibility would be that police officers and community people in Birmingham could undertake this kind of education of your police department.
Thank you. Roberson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dr. Kennedy, for being here along with the other representatives that are here today. I will say this, with the 100 Days of Nonviolence Initiative for the past five years, which is a youth-led, adult-guided initiative, we have not had a young person age 18 to die to a census violent act in the city of Birmingham. That's just not Council Roberson, that's Chief A.C. Roper. The police department has been very engaged in this process and involved in making sure that youth violence is at a reduction here in the city of Birmingham. And so we want to continue those efforts. I would love to hear more of what you have to offer, and I know we scheduled this afternoon to meet, but that's not going to take place now, and see how we can collaborate along with your delegates and along with the mayor and this council to help with law enforcement engagement and initiatives in our community. Just as of yesterday, we saw a situation in McKinney, Texas, that I think, you know, opened up a lot of eyes for citizens across the United States. Just a few weeks ago, on 60 Minutes, we saw Chief Calvin Williams from the city of Cleveland dealing with issues there as it relates to law enforcement and relations and being really active in the community. I think that's a very important part in this piece, and I'm glad to see the chief, along with the mayor, come together with you as it relates to how law enforcement in the city of Birmingham can really engage our community efforts even more. Just as of yesterday, we had a press conference in District 7 related to an 86-year-old man who was murdered. Neighborhood presidents came together to give a monetary reward to help address the investigation. So there are some things already in place, and I'm hoping that this will be a sense of transparency and relations to this process and this program moving forward, so you can understand all aspects of what's going on in the city of Birmingham as it becomes more of a community policing community. I talked briefly, Mayor, with U.S. Attorney George Vance after you all had the meeting that Chief recognized earlier. And how did that come out? What were some of the results of that, with the prospects that you all had discussions with? And what kind of feedback was there as it relates to those prospects that you all had conversations with on last week?
Well, thank you, sir. The first call-in, because it's something we would be doing periodically, went extremely well, as Dr. Kennedy referred to, his team gave the feedback, that it was one of the best ones. We had 22 young men that showed up that night to receive a message of hope, but also to receive a message that if you continue down this path, that the data shows that you're most likely to kill or be killed. And so it went very well. We've actually had some young men come forward from that group now requesting assistance. And each young man was provided a phone number that was set up just for them, with 24-hour access, so they can call that number at any time, there's a voice on the other line, to help them access those resources for them to change their lives. And so that was a great first step, but as David and I talked this morning, there are some other modules that we can roll out later on. So we're building the foundation with that Violence Reduction Initiative that's going to partner with this Building Community Trust Initiative, and I think there's great things ahead for Birmingham.
That's good. Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing him to do that. And last but not least, I don't know if my time is up, Mr. President. I want to thank Council Hoyer for acknowledging the council members' work as a body as it relates to the reduction of violence in our community. And I've had meetings with the Department of Justice, particularly Kevin Jenkins, with the Internal Affairs, or Government Affairs, for the Department of Justice about youth violence and reduction. And I think we continue those conversations, Dr. King, to see what we can do here in the city of Birmingham, and be more than happy to sit down with you all, discuss more about the programs that we have implemented here in the city. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. David, if you would just stay there for a second. I'd like to bring up Ms. Angela Hall, who is, and as Ms. Hall come forward, please give her a round of applause, because we're dropping the interim from her name. And she is the new library director. So Angela, we're happy to have you here, and congratulations, and we look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you so very much. And I do have some other staff members from the library here with me, and I'd like to invite them to come on up. But good morning again, Mr. Mayor, to President Austin and members of the council. Well, I am Angela Fisher-Hall, the Director of the Birmingham Public Library, so I'm very happy to actually say that officially now. But as the Department of the City of Birmingham, we are the public library, and our library staff work to build library collections and programs that reflect the immediate needs of our city and the communities we serve. And when new initiatives are launched throughout the city, we look for ways where we can connect in order to help move our city forward. And some things we may already have in place, like our computer training classes, our online resources for business development, or databases for genealogical research. We also look at new, low-cost initiatives that can give us the opportunity to build on partnerships and to get involved in continuing to make Birmingham the model city that it is. When Mayor Bell and Chief Roper announced the creation of their Violence Reduction Plan last week, I also received a call from April Odom, our Director of Public Information for the city. And she indicated that the book, Don't Shoot by David Kennedy, would be a resource that would be used by the community for this initiative. And so as a result, our staff took a close look at how our libraries could get involved. And very briefly, I've asked Sandy Lee, our Coordinator for the Eastern Region, to share an update regarding summer reading programs that are designed to improve communication and trust among our children and law enforcement officers. And also, Corinne Davis, our Coordinator for Public Services at the Central Library, she'll focus on a new reading initiative that we have for community leaders, law enforcement, and other concerned citizens. So join me right now in welcoming Sandy Lee for a brief remarks.
Good morning. I am Sandy Lee. I would like to share with you, our children's theme this summer is "Every Hero Has a Story." And as a part of the programs we are already presenting this summer, our focus has been real-life heroes, and those police officers are some of those real-life heroes. And we thank Chief Roper and the officers for allowing them to come to the libraries and share with the children what their role is in the communities, what they do. They have already visited the Wyllam and the Powderly Library this summer, and going into June and July, we'll have those programs at the West End Library, the North Birmingham Library, the Springville Road Library, and the Five Points West Library. So we're really pleased that the children have that opportunity to see the officers in a role where they can find out what it is that they do, the role they play in their community, and get to meet them. So many of our children don't know their officers by name or know them when they see them, so that's an opportunity for those children to become aware and be part of the community and know their community officers. So again, Chief Roper, thank you so much for your participation.
Hi, I'm Corinne Davis. I'm Head of Public Service at the Downtown Library. And in support of the mayor's initiative, the chief, in support of the city council in our city, we have actually purchased 250 copies of the book, Don't Shoot, and we are distributing, we're going to distribute them Monday to all of our libraries, and we are giving them away for free to our patrons. So basically, if a patron comes in and they ask for it, we will have them available for free. And also, in each book, we're going to put this flyer, okay? And I'm not sure if you all have a copy of this, but basically, it just talks about, "Join our mayor and the Birmingham Public Library," and what we're doing and what the mayor's trying to do. Okay? Thank you.
You know, this afternoon, at noon, David will be speaking to the Rotary Club, and his book will be highlighted at that time. And I'm just grateful to our new director of the library, as well as her staff, for helping us take the initiative to really build trust in our community. This is something that's been long in the works. This is something that is needed, and we have to attack it at all different levels. And by bringing all the resources to bear on this issue, hopefully, we can make an impact. So thank you, Madam Director. Thank you to your staff. And David?
Thank you, Mayor.
We look forward to you speaking to the greater body at the Rotary Club this afternoon. So thank you all so much.
Thank you so much, and the books will be available for distribution starting Monday to the public, limited supplies. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I had indicated that I wanted to bring David up, but can I go on with the rest of it? Be fairly brief. June 18th, 2015 is National Dump the Pump Day, and we have members of the BJCTA, Birmingham Jefferson Transit Authority, here to give us more information and to receive a proclamation on behalf of the city. Hold on, we're good, David. I'll talk to you later on.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'd like to issue this proclamation that reads, "Whereas June 18th, 2015 marks the 10th Annual National Dump the Pump Day as a day that encourages people to ride public transportation, as public transit powers community growth by driving economic, by driving economic development and revitalizing neighborhoods. And whereas, for every $1 invested in public transportation generates approximately $4 in economic returns. And whereas, public transportation is a $61 billion industry that puts people to work, directly employing nearly 400,000 people and creating hundreds of thousands of private sector jobs. And whereas, nearly 60% of public transit trips are work commutes. And whereas, people who ride public transportation can save, on the average, more than $9,394 a year, based on today's gas prices, the cost of owning a car, and average unreserved parking rate. And whereas, the U.S. Public Transportation use saves 4.2 billion gallons of gasoline annually. And whereas, public transportation use 498 urban areas in the United States saved 865 million hours annually in travel time and 450 million gallons of fuel. And without public transportation, annual congestion costs would have risen by nearly $21 billion, from $121 billion to $142 billion." Now, therefore, I, William A. Bell, Sr. Now therefore, William A. Bell, Sr., Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby proclaim June 18th, 2015, as National Dump The Pump Day in Birmingham, and urge all of our citizens to join with the public transportation agencies across the country to encourage people to ride public transportation. Mr. Chairman, we present this proclamation to you, as well as the other board members, and thank you for your dedicated service and hard work to build public transportation. Thank you.
To our gracious mayor and council, we're thankful for this proclamation, and we also encourage you to ride transit on June 18th, but every day, but June 18th, it will definitely be free for the public to ride, and we encourage you to ride. We'll be there riding. We're also thankful for our board members, Bakara Malden and Patricia Henderson, also our Chief of Staff, Barbara Murdock, that is here with us today. Thank you.
Thank you all. President, on June 15th, the Birmingham Museum of Art will officially open the exhibition of murals from Talladega by the late African-American artist Hale Woodruff. Rising Up: Hale Woodruff's Murals at Talladega College has toured the United States for the past three years. Here to give us more information is Gail Andrews, along with her staff, Kelly Morgan, Curatorial Fellow at the Birmingham Museum of Art. I hope I said that right, Kelly.
Sure did. Good morning, everyone. Mayor, thank you so much. Counsel, thank you, councilors, thank you so much for the opportunity to come. We are excited, on Thursday evening, to open Rising Up: Hale Woodruff's Murals from Talladega College, which continues through September the 6th. I hope all of you have received your invitation. It was sent, and we look forward to seeing you then, as well as Friday night at Art on the Rocks, which will also feature the Woodruff murals. We will have a number of education programs for both children and adults throughout the summer, many opportunities to learn both about the history of one of our great American artists, Hale Woodruff, and these truly, not just Alabama treasures, but national treasures that are making their appearance home after the mayor just said a national tour, a very successful national tour. One of those programs includes our own Judge Cook, who will be speaking particularly, specifically, on the Amistad history as it relates to the murals in the very fine collection. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Graham Betcher, our Chief Curator and Curator of American Art, and Kelly Morgan, our Curatorial Fellow, who is with us for the year, to talk about Rising Up: Hale Woodruff.
Thanks, Gail. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, distinguished councilors.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be here today, and I appreciate your time. We are going to tag-team this this morning, so I'm going to tee up a little bit of history about Hale Woodruff, and then Kelly's going to talk about the murals. Hale Woodruff, like Gail said, is one of our most distinguished artists that this country has ever produced. He was a native of Cairo, Illinois. He was raised just up the road in Nashville, Tennessee, and then he went on to Indianapolis and Chicago for his artistic training. But it was in 1927 when he received a distinguished fellowship from the Harmon Foundation that his life completely changed. That fellowship enabled him to go to Paris, where he could live and thrive as an artist and learn from the great European modernists, and meet one of his own personal heroes, a real pioneer among black artists, Henry Osawa Tanner. So he was able to thrive in Paris in a way that he had not been able to do in the United States, because it created a nurturing atmosphere for a young black artist. He soaked in everything that he possibly could from those glorious four years, became steeped in so many different styles, and proved himself a versatile master of every style that he tried his hands at. And he brought all of that knowledge and education back to the United States, and in 1931, established the Art Department at Atlanta University. And that's where the story of Hale Woodruff in the South, in our neck of the woods, really begins. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Again, I'm Kelly Morgan. I'm the Curatorial Fellow of African-American Art at the Birmingham Museum of Art. And as Graham left off, so in '31, he starts working at Atlanta University, beginning that art program. And Bill Gordon Gallagher, the President of Talladega, caught wind of this, and he wanted Hale Woodruff to come to Talladega and teach. So Woodruff started teaching at Talladega on Fridays and Thursdays. He would make the commute back and forth to also begin an art program in Talladega. And so Woodruff became the only academically trained artist, American artist, to start art programs at institutes of higher education in the South. In 1938, Gallagher asked or approached Woodruff to create the murals, because in 1939, it marked the centennial of the Amistad Mutiny and the following trial. And Talladega has a very interesting relationship to that mutiny. One, the defense of the captives who overthrew their slaveholders or slavers that day. It led to an 1846 development of the Association, American Missionary Association. And Talladega College was created and founded with funds by that association. And so Gallagher wanted to create a major type of homage to the American Missionary Association, and to also commemorate the building of Savory Library. So these murals are fantastic in color. They are world-renowned in the fact that anytime anybody teaches or mentions the Amistad case and the Amistad Mutiny, the Hale Woodruff murals are the preeminent visual source. And so they have world-renowned, you know, very, very popular, and very well-recognized. There are a lot of Talladega alumni in the Birmingham area, and they are very special to the Talladega community. And this is the very first time that even Talladega alums will be able to see the murals this close up. So when you go to Savory Library, when they're installed in their original home place, they're up in the ceiling. So coming to the museum this week and next week, or even the week after, throughout the exhibition, you actually get a chance to get up close to them and actually see Woodruff's brushwork. And you can see, you know, the stylistic changes that he made with the murals. So like I said, they're stunning, and if all of you, invite your friends, invite your families, please send them out. Graham and I will be there this week, giving tours.
If I can just add that the exhibition will be open until September 6th. So if you're not able to come for the opening, there's ample opportunity at a later date. And the exhibition is free to the public. It's not a ticketed exhibition, so there are no barriers to everyone coming and enjoying it as many times as they want. And so I hope you'll help us promote this important show to the communities you serve. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
And have some material.
And as final, thank you for the support of this project and for everything you do for us. Thank you so much.
Well, Gail, listen, my heart was pricked as you all were presenting this. I think I've shared with some folk, I came trace, let alone draw. But I do have an appreciation for the arts. I just think it's important. There's a tremendous history with the Amistad. I think I was first introduced to the paintings by Mrs. Parker, Council Parker, and I think Mayor Langford at the time. And matter of fact, he had some out in the hallway. And Council Parker so graciously gave me one of his mother's paintings of the Amistad. And so it was a print, rather, it wasn't a painting, it was a print. Let me just say that, because I'd be rich right now, wouldn't have to work anymore. Because I think they're worth about $40 million, I think, what I read some time ago. But it's just important, and I hope that, Mr. President, we put it on our website, that we really do blast this. This is a great opportunity for our young people to come and see. You know, Talladega has such steep tradition, not only in academia, but in the arts. They've had renowned persons to come and either teach, do something with respect to the college. And Dr. Hawkins is doing an excellent job, as he is, you know, taking Talladega to a new level. And I do know that Judge Cook is a great storyteller. I know that's going to be marvelous when he makes that presentation, because I've heard him speak before, and he has a way of inviting you in, and you all didn't prick my heart, really, this morning. And so I'm anxious now to come and partake. But this is, you know, art is transcendent. And, yeah, we've had many conversations around what we think we ought to be doing, and I said, I want to say this to the council, we really do need to expand the museum. I just think that's important. You didn't ask for that, but I just believe it's important, because we can do more. There's a lot of art that's just sitting in the basement of the museum that really need to be exhibited. And so we do know that if, you know, things are on loan, it appreciates the art. And so there are a lot of things that happen as a result of art. Doctors choose to come to the community where you have a strong arts community, and we've got one of the best museums in the Southeast, if not in the United States of America. So I am really excited about what we're going to be able to do. And I'm going to make sure I bring some of my nieces and nephews, because they really need to see this. And I'm just glad y'all gave me a little book, too, so I can read. But this is wonderful, Mr. Mayor. This is, you know, this is high on my end, so I really appreciate you bringing them this morning.
Well, please let us know any ways we can come out to your community as well, with talks, with presentations, with more information, with programs. We have funds, as you know, to bring students in. We have a bus fund in the summer. We can use that for camps and for community centers. So we want so many people to come see the shows. We want everybody to come to the museum on a regular basis and see all the exhibitions. But any ideas, contacts you have, all of you, please don't hesitate to contact me or anyone here.
And, Gail, let me take the opportunity to publicly thank President Billy Hawkins. It was in a conversation that he and I had a couple of years ago, in which he was talking about the paintings were being restored and would be going on tour, and he named all the different places it was going on tour. And I think the last stop was supposed to have been the High Museum in Atlanta, and I said, what about Birmingham? And at that time, he did not have Birmingham on that list. And I immediately contacted Gail, and everything worked out beautifully that we now will be the last facility to have the murals here in Birmingham before they go back to their permanent position at Talladega College. And it gives us a unique opportunity, as the council said, to share this great piece of art with not only the African-American community, but all communities. So I'm grateful for the hard work, and from that one little idea you all have developed, an entire program around it, and I thank you for the hard work.
Well, we appreciate you, and we are extremely proud and excited about this exhibition. We expect it to be a huge success. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Council Lundy?
Let me just say, you know, art appreciation, I think, for our children opens up a world of opportunity. I know what art appreciation did for me, having taken art history at Lawson State Community College, as well as Alabama A&amp;M. Those courses were probably the most challenging in my curriculum of language arts. But it was so intrinsically rewarding. And I think our children need to gain art appreciation, because it just opens up so many avenues. Our next astronauts and scientists and mathematicians have to be well-balanced. You know, there's a huge push for STEM education, or STEAM, but without the arts. You know, you have an unbalanced child. And I'm excited about what you're doing in District Nine with Toby Richards. She does a yeoman's job.
Yeoman's. She is so talented.
But really bringing, really bringing, really bringing the arts to the community. I'm excited about what she's doing. And lastly, let me ask, will there be any of the prints available around this today or in the future?
I will ask our store manager, and we will see what we can do. I don't know the answer to that, but we will try, for sure. If they're available, we'll get them, let me put it that way.
You know, because off times when I'm in other cities...
I know, there are prints and posters from the exhibition.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
It'll say like, you know, the High Museum of Art at the bottom, the dates, and, you know.
Right, exactly. We'll do that. We can make posters if we don't have that in process.
That would be awesome.
The other thing I'll say, just following up both on Mr. Kennedy's presentation and your dialogue with him and what you just said, we know from research, and this was a research program that Tommy Bice, Superintendent of Alabama Schools, did, which is that the arts keep children, keep students in lower grades and in high school longer. And often, when he followed, sometimes, children who have dropped out of school return to school when art, music, theater are placed back in the curriculum. So I heartily endorse what you say, and we need to continue to do all we can. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Two other brief announcements. This morning, we have also with us Drew Clark with Legal Services, here to give us an update on implementing the preservation of wealth in our community. This program is part of the RISE Initiative, and Drew, as you come forward, also part of the RISE Initiative. We will be having a community meeting on June 15th at the Pratt City Library, and it is being hosted by Councilor Lundy and myself, to bring the community up to date on plans for the implementation of the RISE community in the Pratt City area and throughout the city of Birmingham. Ladies?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to introduce Angela Jenkins. She's the other advocate on the grant, and will be doing the presentation this morning.
Thank you, Mayor Bell, and President Austin and council. We thank you for actually allowing us Legal Services Alabama, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) state law firm that provide high-quality, free civil legal services to vulnerable, low-income people in 67 counties in Alabama. We were actually tasked with partnering with you all to accomplish two things, to address problems within the city of Birmingham, through outreach efforts to educate the city residents on wills and land laws, to those who may not understand why having a will is important. Secondly, to provide free drafting and execution of wills and will probate to low and moderate-income property owners and senior citizens. Residents will also benefit from holistic approach by receiving assistance in a myriad of other issues that arise, those issues to include ejections, foreclosures, divorces with domestic violence and fair housing violations. So we were tasked with three goals. The first goal was to actually prepare wills and execute them for 350 at least clients within the city of Birmingham. And we're going to accomplish this by assisting 29 each month. Well, during this past year, we actually assisted 859 clients in drafting last will and testaments for their benefit. We did this in our office, at home, for homebound residents, and on occasions, we actually went to hospitals to actually execute last will and testaments. And this was critical for some families, because we had several individuals who passed away quickly, and then we were able to provide them with that will. And then we subsequently assisted their families in guiding them through the probate process, which actually assisted us from having heirs property in the city, because then that property was actually to individual that the deceased had actually left a property to. Secondly, our goal was to provide critically needed assistance to individuals' legal matters to avoid homelessness from ejections and land laws, such issues as denial of public benefits, denial of unemployment compensation, garnishment, collections, and domestic violence issues. And we were going to accomplish this goal by assisting 125 clients, or 10 clients, a month with these issues. And in that area, we actually assisted 154 clients with legal issues during the past year to accomplish that goal. We had clients that we assisted where food assistance had been denied because DHR had lost their paperwork. We were able to quickly get them reinstated and get them assistance quickly. We have had individuals who were being denied SSI benefits that we were able to work with and stop them from denying those SSI benefits, as well as working with clients for unemployment compensation issues, whereas they were not employed, and we were able to actually get them unemployment compensation to provide. Our third goal was to provide education and outreach services... Our third goal was to provide education and outreach services to educate and inform the residents about preparation of wills and probate process. And we're gonna accomplish this by actually conducting two outreach activities a month. Well, this past year, we conducted 44 outreach presentations to neighborhood associations, churches, senior citizens group, and organizations. And we had over 983 participants actually attending these presentations. So, we certainly made an impact within the community. But in addition to that, we have conducted eight will clinics, but we have actually taken our office to libraries, churches. Senior Citizens Tower was where we have actually on the spot drafted last will and testaments for clients. And this addressed transportation issues where the clients could not actually get to us, so we actually took our office to them. And we have used television, radio, and social media to actually advertise our will clinics. And our next will clinic will actually be on Friday, June 19th, and we're gonna be at the West End Library where we will draft last will and testaments there. One week ago, I was actually at the Oakwood Place Neighborhood Meeting making a presentation. And Mayor Bell actually walked in during that presentation. So, he was actually able to see firsthand the presentations that we're actually making to the community to educate them on all the issues that are out there and what we're doing to assist them with those different issues. So, we were tasked with actually measuring our goal by 475 issues. But during this past year, we actually assisted clients with 1,392 issues, where we actually exceeded the goal by 65 percent. So, we would like to thank you, Mayor Bell, and you, City Counsel, for partnering with us in the Community Development Block Grant that we started on April 1st of last year to preserve the wealth of our community. So, we thank you, and we're glad that we're actually able to assist and serve the residents of Birmingham.
Thank you so much. And hopefully, this will go to eliminating, in the future, homes that go untransferred, that are not transferred to family members because of there's not a will. Then those homes become dilapidated. They turn into, when they're torn down, then they become overgrown lots. But as we educate people and give them the tools necessary to carry out their wills, it will help us reduce the opportunity to have dilapidated houses in our community. And I don't see, I think Counselor is over there. Counselor Tyson was also at that meeting at Oakwood, and it was a very good presentation. I think the neighbors received it very well. So, please, continue the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. And we actually distribute will information packets. We actually have a brochure. We tell them what other services are actually available to Legal Services Alabama. And we just brought you all a copy of the packet so that you can actually see what we distribute to them to actually assist them with drafting their documents and executing them. So, thank you for allowing us to come and update you on the project that we're partnering with you.
Counsel Abbott and Counsel Lundy have something.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say thank you for what you do. This is such a blessing for the entire city of Birmingham. There are so many people who think that they can't afford a lawyer, therefore, they can't have a will. Some people think if they don't ever do a will, they're never gonna die. We all know that's not true. But what you do is just wonderful. And of course, I know the city's provided some funding, but a member of my family took advantage of the service, who needed it desperately. And I think that this is just a blessing for Birmingham, where we have so many heir properties that just fall in on themselves because nobody's in charge. So, this is a great thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I want to thank our Community Development Department under the leadership of John Cologne for helping to develop the RISE program and reaching out for these needed legal services in the community. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Cam.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. Mr. Mayor, I just want to applaud you. You know, I've been here for 20 months. And one of the things that I have come to understand is that, if you boil it down to low gravy, this is the reason why you see blight in Birmingham. The failure for our constituency to have wills, trusts, and things of that nature. When you just really boil it down, you can't transfer property that has no heir. You know, so it just sits there in trust, in probate. If we can get critical mass on folks getting their wills done, we could eliminate the blight in our community within months. My wife and I spent a handsome ransom to get this done. And I was just telling our pro temp, Counselor Robson, to have this free. People don't understand the magnitude of that. You know, I mean, in order to go to a reputable attorney to get this done, it costs you a month's pay. I mean, really. You know, and this is free. And we could take over, we could take control of our own situation by having a will and a trust. So, I just want to applaud Mr. Cologne and the fine folks in his office for bringing this to bear. I want to thank the mayor for his leadership on this because the single thing that we can do as people is to get this done. I promise you, you will leave a legacy for your children's children if you do this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Is James Gibbs here? James? Quickly, James, I know I've taken a little bit more time than usual. If you could share with the council about the Family Fund Day that's coming up.
To the mayor and to the city council, very quickly, very quickly. What we have decided to do this year, in the past years, we've been having a crossplex, go out and have a great contest with all employees, but employees could not attend because they have to be at work. But what a great thing we can do for our employees. We're with our employees eight hours a day, five days a week, probably more with them than with our family. What a great day we can have to show to our employees how we appreciate them, how we appreciate our employees. And what the mayor come up with is that for the past two years, we have had the health at Crossplex, the Birmingham Crossplex, the event of four city employees, a day to get out of the office of wait for their duties at work, and partakes in numerous events and competition alongside their fellow coworkers against other city employees. However, this day of commemorative era was not experienced by everyone, as a lot of our employees were not allowed to participate in the event, and some were not informed until near the end of the fairs. Employees and family and Fund Day then will allow all city employees to come out. What a great reunion, to have all employees to come out, to see each other, to be a part of it. That's something great. We can't do anything better for our employees. Let them come together and play, let them see their families. That's something good. We also allow you to do tailgate for your employees, for your department. And if not, we have hot dogs and hamburgers and all other little things free, but for the family. Once in a while, we need to bring the family together. At every family reunion, you know, we're gonna have Little John and Little Bob. Everybody not gonna get along with each other. But at the end of the day, they can all have a good time. And that's something that we can always remember. So, we passed our Family Fund Day. It's gonna be at the East Penson Valley Rec Center, which is a great place to be. So, come on out. I commend the mayor and chief of staff for this great idea, because sometimes, we need to rest, and sometimes, we need to have fun. So, I hope that everybody will come out and just have a great day.
Thank you, James. Appreciate that. And finally, speaking of family fun, I want to express my appreciation to the Park and Recreation Board for the Family Fish Rodeo they had this past weekend. And I dare say, that was the best one for me because I had a chance to take my grandson fishing for the very first time. So, I know Ms. Abbott was there, and Counselor Rafferty was there also.
Parker?
Yeah, Counsel Park.
Got there first.
Yeah, he was the first one there. And, but I think everyone had a great time. It's always a great event. And I really want to thank Stanley and the entire crew for making it possible.
I want to know why they didn't fix it so we'd all catch a fish.
I think you and I got there a little too late. It was a little bit hot. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Do we have anything else for the mayor before we move on with our, Counsel Tyson? You have something, Counsel Tyson? Mr. Pro temp?
Yes, sir. What can I do?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. There's a ditch on 113 West End Drive that the city owns on this property, and it need to be cut and cleaned. There's snakes and rodents and everything in there. And the citizens want that cleaned down. 113 West End Drive. There's a lot on the side of 1628 Alabama Avenue that's in very bad shape, and dogs are hiding in there, and they want it cut. The residents are requesting no dumping signs behind 1157 15th Street southwest, where you see on the side, the, I guess landlords are leaving, cleaning out houses, leaving couches, tables, everything that you know that you have in a house. They bring it and dump it there. There is a series of home break-ins and abandoned cars parked on the front lawn on 1500 block of Maple Avenue. This home is abandoned on that corner of Maple Avenue. It's actually abandoned, and the weeds have grown up, and someone have parked the cars there. They've been there for, I know, at least seven or eight months, that I have actually went by there and seen. And the residents are very concerned because they have been breaking in houses around in that area. And they feel like people are hiding merchandise in this house, and they would like for someone to come out and to see about that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Been in attendance at the Jones Valley Neighborhood Meeting and also West End Manor on yesterday. Mr. Mayor, if it's permissible, Mr. Fancher, when is the scheduled time for Public Works to come out to the southwestern or western area? I know you do it in areas, by areas.
Good morning. Stephen Fancher, Public Works. We're in the process of updating that schedule right now. It'll be out before the beginning of the fiscal year and have both neighborhoods and major thoroughfares laid out for the remainder of the calendar year. It'll show the frequency and the date that will be on each of the neighborhoods and major thoroughfares.
Okay, great. Will we be able to have copies of that so we can distribute?
Oh, yes, sir. We'll pass it out to the council. It'll also be available through 311. So, if a resident calls in, and once they input that address, it will tell them then what the frequency is. And I think 311 is gonna kick off the middle of next week sometime.
Okay, all right. In the southwestern area, you don't know exactly when.
Not off the top of my head, I don't.
Well, I look forward to getting that information. Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Hoyt, if you have something?
Well, I mean, that's the same concern. So, I'm glad to hear that. We certainly need it.
All right. While you're going down there to do your presentation, one thing, Mayor, we had our, during our budget tours again this year, and I don't know if your department heads or you were extending an invitation to go, and if you were not, be careful, Counsel Hoyt, it's a step right there. I don't know if you were extending the invitation or not. And if you weren't, that was oversight on our part. But we have three more. We had a very good group last night. All the council members were there except for Counsel Park, who's out of town, and Counsel Rafferty. And we had over 100 people there that had questions. They had good comments. But if you could have your department, if they can be there, we would like for some of your department heads to be there to answer some of the questions.
The schedule?
Yeah, I'll give you a schedule. But it was good. We're going, we have three more communities that we're going into, and I'll make the announcement later and make sure that you get a schedule. But we would appreciate if you had some of your department heads there. They raised some good questions that I think would just be good to have some answers to them, if we can. But go ahead, Counsel Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning to the mayor, and good morning to the council and to this very august body. I'm delighted this morning to have with me Mr. Anthony Marino of Marino Grocers. It was three years ago. We've been doing Part of with a Purpose for now eight years. And of course, Anthony Marino said, "Hoyt, we need to do something different." He said, "What about education with a purpose?" We do Part of with a Purpose, but the last three years, we have awarded scholarships based on Anthony's willing and partnership in the community, being able to call on certain folk to help us raise money, to give to our young folk. Our two top winners, I'm gonna let Anthony tell you about that, because really, it's his program, and I don't want to steal nothing from him because he's very diligent in working with, he's been our chair for the last six years with Part of with a Purpose. And so, we are just delighted to have Anthony. Why don't you come down this morning and present our scholarship recipients? I want to thank Mrs. Langford, Mrs. Kim Jenkins. They are my staff members who work very diligently. I want to thank Mr. Wobbe King, Mr. Anthony, what's Anthony's last name? Can't think of Anthony's last name. But these are the folk that had to sit down and read all these essays from the various high schools. But I also want to thank Post-Hemicycle Otis Dismuth, because Otis had chaired this since its inception, and Miss Ricefield, who has helped us to evaluate this. And so, I just want to say, Otis, we thank you. Your work is still going on and is still making a difference even as we speak. So, just want to say that. Anthony, if you want to present.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor Bell.
Good morning.
President Austin. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you this morning and share my passion about the youth. Parted with a Purpose has got a big purpose. It started out as a small venue that has grown into a citywide program that we have the first Saturday in October. This year will be October the 3rd at the Inslee Park. And I think all of you have heard about Parted with a Purpose, and I think that you have knowledge on what we came up with to try to extend our empowerment of the youth in our city. With that, we sent an essay out to all Birmingham high schools. Carver, Holy Family Cristo Ray, Huffman, Jackson Olend, Parker, Ramsey, Winona, and Woodlong. We sent out a essay and asked the seniors to answer a 200-word essay. And as you guys know from my presence in the past, that the Marino family is big on community service. So, with the youth, we want to extend that hand out to the youth and tell them they need to be involved, not in just being A.B. honor roll students, but what are they doing for their community? With that, the essay says, "How can I make a positive difference in my community?" Well, we thought that we could do that if we could further their education and partner with them on community service. We were able to raise money and to give scholarships, four scholarships this year. And one of the things that's touched my heart from an Italian immigrant family is that everyone should have a choice. Everyone should have a chance in life. And these kids that's coming along today that we have interviewed in these, when they brought the essays and we narrowed them down to 10, from 30, 40, or 50 of them turned the essays in, being graded by these educators, that we recognize that we have got potential leaders that's growing up, not just in any state, but in our city of Birmingham. We tell them that they have an opportunity for community service, but you also have to have education. And with all of you sitting on the panel up here this morning, you know how important education is. And we applaud and thank you for your community service and with your leadership and the small part that I play, we hope that the seniors in high school through small part that I play, we hope that the seniors in high school through these scholarships that we've given them, that they could be the leaders of tomorrow. I tell them that you've got Barack Obama, the first black Afro-American to be president of the United States, the most powerful country in the world. You had Eric Holder, first United States Attorney General. And also, you had just recently, the first black Afro-American woman, Ms. Loretta Lynch, to become the first Attorney General. That's Attorney General number eighty-three. What happened to eighty-two on down to one? So with that passion, we were able to raise money, to tell these kids we care about them, we want them to not only be A B honor roll students, we want these children to say, "We live in this community, we wanna make a difference in this community." So with that said, I would like to have the recipients, and Kim, can you, uh, bring the recipients up, please? We would like to introduce these recipients, these recipients from these high schools. Good morning, ladies. Kim, can you bring those up, please? Kaylin McMillan, graduate of Jackson Olin High School. We would like to award you a thousand-dollar scholarship and a laptop for you to take to college. Darian Bestor. This girl's from Ramsey High School. I know y'all know a lot about Ramsey High School and I've been there for a number of years. Darian Bestor has got a four-point-oh GPA at Ramsey High School. These, these, these young people are just so impressive just to be around them and talk to them, and I don't want anybody to tell you that we do not have an education service, schools in our city of Birmingham that is second grade. Because we've got kids, when they walk in, you think they're getting ready to run for public office already, but Darian is receiving a thousand-dollar scholarship and also a laptop for her to take to college and further her education. Raina Means. She's a little bit mighty, three-point-nine GPA. Raina is receiving a five-hundred-dollar scholarship to the school of her choice, and we're very, very proud of Raina. And fourth is Ms. Ashley Greer. She's from Holy Family Cristo Ray, a smart young lady, she has to be. I never made grades the way Ashley has made them. She's got a four-point-oh GPA, she's going to college and she's receiving a five-hundred-dollar scholarship from Party With A Purpose this morning. Thank you very much. It's a labor of love, and I know all of you sitting up here sometimes feels like you don't have enough hours in a day to, uh, run our city, but I just wanna personally say, from the mayor to President Austin and to all of you ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate what you're doing. We know our city's moving forward, and with the youth of today, we hope that we'll continue to a higher level. Thank you.
My last comment, Mr. President, is the fact that we want you to meet, uh, these young folk. We have a reception planned on the second floor. We're inviting all the department heads, the mayor, uh, and, uh, chief of staff and all, to come down and talk with these young folk and get a chance to meet them. They wanna meet you all. And so, um, the president's gonna bring greetings, uh, made provisions for the mayor to bring greetings, but I understand he may not be there, but he has a death's knee, uh, that would be fine, but I just want you all to know that, uh, these are our children, uh, they will become what we instill in them and what we invest in them. And I'm reminded of a writer who says that the spirit of achievement is guided by the notion that success is an installment plan upon which we make daily payments until we maximize ourselves. So we are challenged, uh, each day to maximize, and I think that the best example we have of this is these young folk, uh, who have come, uh, and, uh, avail themselves, uh, in writing and really articulating their concern for this community. And so we said, "Thank you, kudos to your parents." I always say the teachers do teach, but the learning takes place at home, and so we wanna thank the parents for, uh, creating an environment that is conducive to academics and learning. And so, thank you, parents. Thank you, parents, uh, for instilling in you. Uh, this is wonderful. Uh, I have not met them until today, and so I don't have anything to do with the interview, uh, but, uh, that's a lot of work. Anthony has done a tremendous job. He's just not, uh, a business owner in the community, but he got tentacles everywhere, not just with Party With A Purpose, but anytime there's something that's happening in the community, you can always count on the Marino brand. It is a high brand, uh, that we have, and we're very proud to, uh, to have him in our community and to call him friend, because he is a friend of this community and his company. So thank you very much, Anthony, and I wanna thank your wife for addressing you this morning. You look mighty sharp.
She said, "She told me you're not gonna embarrass me over there."
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Tyson?
Immediately after, um, the council meeting, we, uh, we would just, uh, uh, meander down, uh, to the second, uh, floor, and so we can meet these young folk.
Council Tyson?
You already know what I'm gonna say. They all are girls. They're Afro-American girls. I just love it, I love it, uh, I can see the future, I can see Loretta, I can see Michelle and all of you, and I just think black women are the bomb, baby. I really do think so. And I'm just so proud of you and, Hoyer, you're in the picture. Get out of the way.
Now, as you are taking your pictures, I just wanna say, Council Hoyer, um, that we have to give kudos to you too, uh, for you just continuing your tradition of Party With A Purpose and really, it's with the purpose. Uh, and so I just wanna thank you for, for your diligence. I know you've, um, been doing this for several years now, but it's really paying off and, and just reinvesting in our community through education. Educating our young people is the most important investment that we can make, uh, because it's someone that will pay off, uh, dividends for years to come, and so I just wanna thank you, uh, for your work and your leadership and really pouring into these young people. Thank you.
Thank you, very kind. Thank you so much for your tolerance this morning.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Clerk, um, get back on the agenda, item, I think we're at item thirty, no. Item, uh?
Seventeen nine.
Number nine.
Item nine. A resolution relative to the application of parking enforcement systems incorporated for a towing service license and vehicle immobilization license to be used at twenty-one-on-one Sixth Avenue North, Suite one-fourteen Birmingham, to operate two records and one truck on the streets of Birmingham.
Alright, um, Council Rafferty, you wanna do it? Go ahead. You have a motion. Move in a second.
To get it before us?
Yes.
Yes, I saw move.
Second. Go ahead.
I've, um, and for some reason I'm missing that page in my agenda.
Is, is it listed as a public hearing?
It is.
Is it listed as a public hearing?
Yeah.
Is the applicant present? Okay, and I don't see Detective Pitts.
You have a motion?
Uh, actually, yes, sir, I have a motion to send this back to public safety, um,
Refer it.
For further, I mean, so defer it back to public safety for further consideration.
You have a second?
Second.
Alright, before us to refer it to public safety, you have a move in a second. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
Voting should be open. Councilmember Tyson? Did we say public safety?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
That vote should be open.
Alright, that item passes, been referred back to public safety, item seventeen.
Okay, item seventeen.
Public safety, mean.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Alethea House Incorporated under which the city would provide a total of up to eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in home funds to construct eight low moderate income rental housing units.
You have a move in a second.
Mr. President, I would, I would approve this.
Second. Abbott, Roberson. Do you have any speakers to this item? Do you have any motions? Alright, we're ready to vote.
Voting should be open. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item should be?
Thirty-four.
Item thirty-four, yep.
Item thirty-four, a resolution approving the amendment to the agreement with Ronald Scott McDowell, Doing Business as McDowell Birmingham, an additional amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars, which increases the amount to be paid to the contractor to one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars to provide artistic conceptual design rendering fabrication and installation services for an outdoor sculpture honoring Nina Milley Yanukov for public display and then authorize the mayor to execute an amendment on behalf of the city.
Mr. President, this is awful consent, and I wanted to say that, uh?
Abbott, Roberson, go ahead.
Dr. Lee and Mr. Mitchell brought to my attention that we had reviewed this, I just didn't recognize it, so everything is okay, I don't have any questions anymore.
Alright.
Okay.
We're ready to vote.
Voting should be open, Councilor Hoyer, Councilmember Tyson. That vote should be up.
Alright, that item passes, next item should be our speakers, right? For all the new business. Let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, uh, first speaker?
First speaker, Dr. Dickerson. That is correct. Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dr. Brenda J. Dickerson. I live at twelve fifteen thirty-first Street South. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am the president of the Citizens Coalition for a Better Birmingham, a five-oh-one C four. The Citizens Coalition is dedicated, as you know, to ensuring that accountability, transparency, and full disclosure be the guiding principles when city officials spend taxpayers' money. Indifference to another's life is simply cruel, especially when you have been elected for the people and by the people. We have entrusted you with our hard-earned dollars and we have expected that you would be good stewards, but what have you done? You have failed to be transparent, you have failed to provide full disclosure, and we are determined to hold you accountable. You have traveled, you have partied, you have issued no bid contracts, you have abused and misused your positions, you have repeatedly failed to take care of your constituents. You have spent our hard-earned tax dollars with reckless disregard. You have not played a significant role in the education of our children or the care for many of our neighborhoods. Many of our neighbors are having to live in blighted areas fraught with crime. You have not concerned yourselves with the health care for our fi- firefighters and police who put their lives on the line every day. In the words of Frederick Douglass, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men," and I will add, "women." Thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker?
Mike Jarvis.
Mr. Jarvis, you have others with you?
Sir?
Did you have others with you that were gonna speak?
Uh, I believe so, possibly.
Bring them up. Mr. Jarvis, Mr. Allen, Ms., uh, Mr. Smith, and Shower. Sure he is Shower. Go ahead, state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name's Mike Jarvis, I'm at eighty-eight oh-eight Valley Brook Road. Um, I've lived there since I was three years old, and I am very heartbroken at the way that the neighborhood has gone down, the East Lake area. I participated in cleaning up the bank's property because I was tired of seeing the decline, and when Mr. Smith decided to try to clean up the property and make a trade school out of it, I thought it was a good idea. I felt like our youth needed a chance to learn something, learn some skills, to help their own families, do something with their lives instead of just spending time. So, everything that's been done up to this point, Mayor Bell allowed us to go in and do a lot of good for the property. It was bad to see all the drug paraphernalia and the problems that had been there, all the things that were stolen, the destruction. The place looks better now. It's not as bad with the blowing paper and the records thrown everywhere. I just wanna see East Lake, Roebuck Springs, all these areas come back to what they were. It doesn't matter black or white who's there, if they take care of the properties, live right, and do, do what they can for their neighbors. That's what we need here, some inspiration, some help, to do the better things for this city that needs to be done. I'm also curious what other plans for that property might be other than a trade school. There's so many different things that have happened over this last year. I've seen a lot of young men work real hard. All those dumpsters that were loaded and hauled off, that was a lot of hard work, sweat, the dust and the filth, the disrespect and the graffiti that was all over those buildings, and the way that so many thousands and thousands of dollars were wasted by all the thieving that went on. We can do better than that. We just have to work together and... I really don't know what else to say. I think I've said enough.
State your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Uh, my name is Jeffrey Allen, uh, my address is one-twenty-one sixty-first Street South, uh, Woodland Community. Uh, what I'd like to talk about today, first, Honorable Mayor, it's a pleasure to get to stand up in front of you, distinguished councilmen, the president, and others, I'm glad to be here today, but, uh, I came in the room and I got kinda filled up, because I looked above the door and I seen the people of the city. I met Mr. Smith, uh, doing some, uh, acting and... I met Mr. Smith during some, uh, acting in Woodland movie. And I ain't really meet him, but I heard a guy behind me. He was just talking. He was just talking about everything, that he had plans for the city and for people, you know, thirty-two thousand dilapidated houses in Birmingham. But, nobody building it in. Everybody want to take it down, knock it down, and, you know, just a vacant lot. There's dale grass growing up, weeds growing on it. Mr. Smith wants to take the Gold Institute out into the community, classes out to rebuild the houses, to put things together. I just, when I heard all that that he was trying to do, I was like, how could anyone really not, not be as passionate about it as he is but not want that to happen? You know, and I just, I just don't really understand that. I worked hard, three hundred and sixty pounds, ex-football player, but I worked hard and pulled just as much trash as anybody else out that building. I came religiously on a Sunday, never asked for anything. Sometimes didn't even want to eat food that they had provided for us. But I just, when I heard what Mr. Smith said and talked to him and seen him work beside, by side, I don't think anybody that ain't as passionate about him would have worked with him on that project. But the way he came across me, the way he spoke passionately about it, I just felt that, how could you not want this to be in the city of Birmingham? Three hundred jobs. You gonna go back into the community, gonna go back in the community and rebuild houses that's gonna go back in the community, to bring people back into the community? You know, the last time we were on the mayor's report, we were here, and everybody was like, you know, the council member thing. It's not just Eastlake. I stay in Woodland. It's not just Woodland. It's gonna be the whole entire city of Birmingham. Everybody's gonna be affected, and not even just Birmingham, Jefferson County. Let's go bigger than Jefferson County. Let's go for Alabama. And surrounding states are gonna be affected by it. It's so much positive things in Birmingham that this can be right there with it. So many of my former friends talk about there not being an opportunity. Everybody ain't gonna be a lawyer. Everybody ain't gonna be a cab driver. What about the people that work with their hands? Give the people that can't really go to school or learn, um, books and give them opportunity to learn as well. That's my, that's my case. And as I said, it's a pleasure to talk to you guys, to come to Birmingham. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Um, Marvin Smith.
Are you?
Hello?
Jeff Allen?
I'm Katara Showers.
Yeah, Marvin Smith is next.
Okay.
They're together.
Okay.
You all together?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Katara Showers. I stay in seventy-one zero five Georgia Road. That's the Gay City Community. I'm a disabled veteran. I'm an artist. I'm a alumni of Woodland High School. I'm just dedicated. I actually went to the military immediately after high school because I felt there was a lack of, uh, opportunity. You know what I'm saying? Like, I felt like there was nothing else here for me. I felt like I needed to take my talents as a leader somewhere else, okay? Um, I know a lot of people in the community. I know a lot of the youth in the community, and I stand here as a voice for the community, saying that we need something. And, uh, I'm not sure if y'all understand the gravity of what a trade school would do, but, uh, one of the councilmembers, Mr. Hoyt, you're talking about art. I love art. All of my friends love art. I'm actually the leader of a group called Black Shepherd Art Collective. You know what I'm saying? Art is one of those things that is very powerful. What I think is mistaken right now is construction being a form of art. Construction is all, and all bit of form of art. You talk about how art moves communities, how art is, you know, how powerful it is. It's very powerful. Art is amazing. And what the school, what the Gold Institute, would actually be, is a foundation for that art of construction. It would give a lot of people a different, a bunch of different avenues, okay? Um, I've been knowing Mr. Smith for a very long time, which would be about a year. Uh, but I've been working with him for a year on this project. Nobody has been as eccentric about it, period. I've been to Montgomery multiple times trying to help Mr. Smith with this project. Um, and more, more than anything, I just want to say that, uh, there is nobody, he's been working on this for two years by himself. The paperwork that was supposed to have been sent out to you guys for this, for this project, I actually helped with. Uh, we are, we are really trying to get this through. Like, uh, we really wanted to help. I mean, we wanted, really wanted to work. And, uh, one thing about, um, the Gold Institute and what it could be, I understand a lot of people said that it would cease or whatever, but this needs to go on, mostly because that school means a lot to a lot more people than just that community. I know people outside of the community that love that school. But I got twenty seconds. I just want to say thank you to everybody, and I pray that you guys heed what's coming towards with Mr. Smith's idea and plans for this city. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker?
My name is Marvin Smith, and I'm the founder and CEO of the Gold Institute of Construction Technology in the Arts. It's a pleasure to see you today here, Mayor Bell, Jarvis Patton, and the city council. I had some disturbing news the other day, that as of yesterday, we are no longer allowed to walk on the property. We can't go there to clean up no more. We're supposed to stay off the property like we are criminals. I have been walking on that property for nineteen months. Not two days, nineteen months. As of October two thousand thirteen, I stood in front of that school, and I had a vision, and I asked God, "How do I acquire this school?" And then, when I did that, I didn't know where to go, and then I met Kim Rafferty. I talked to her on the phone, and she said to me, "I can help you." And I got fifteen emails stating the case, and she helped me. She talked to me on the phone, and she told me how to do it and where to go. Then I went to John Cologne, was in his office. We had multiple conversations. He even came late one time. And then, that being said, I ran it to Mayor Bell. And Mayor Bell, me and him sat down and had a conversation, and I believe what he told me. I believe he's an honorable man, and I gave him a shirt with the Gold Institute on it. It was white. And I believe what he said to me, but the person, the person who he told to do it did not follow his orders. Not at all. And now I'm standing here before you today, three hundred, three hundred plus people have come to that school, plus many more. We moved, removed eighteen dumpsters of trash, full to capacity, twelve tons of trash. One hundred and twenty classrooms were cleaned, and I've been cutting the grass every Sunday since the day the grass started growing. Now, I'm asking a simple question. We would like to continue this process, sir. We really do. I am dedicated. I'm no fool. I understand exactly what I need to do. And then I've been told I have what they call the mythical seven-hundred-page document. But Mayor Bell, Jarvis Patton, you've been sent that mythical seven-hundred-page document in PDF form. And what I'm asking you to do is give me an opportunity to move forward this project. I've heard everybody speak and talk. I've heard all the blessings that you have bestowed, but not one time, none of you came down there. And we've been there for seven months. I invited you to come down there, and you did not come. You go everywhere else. Everywhere else you go.
Your time is up.
And it don't make no sense.
Your time is up.
I've listened to each one of you.
Sir, your time is-
I know each one of you. But you see there, it says here, "The people are the city."
Sir, officer, can you please?
There's no need for that, officer. I know Officer Lewis.
Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker?
Um, Annie Clark.
Councilpeople. My name is Annie P. Clark. I live at two seventeen Lake Miller Avenue Southwest in West End. I've been having problems with this man that live next door to me shooting. For October the ninth will be five years. His son is the lieutenant at the West Precinct, where the officers are being dispatched from. So, when I called them, naturally, they're not gonna do anything when he is their lieutenant. They reluctant to do anything. The ones that look like me, they come in and say, "Oh, he got strong feelings for you. He's sweet on you." That's not the problem. I'm seventy-five years old. I deal by myself. When this started, I was seventy-one. And I tell them, "I'm seventy-one years old, and I'm not hot to trot. I don't want this man." I told him a thousand times. He come knocking on beats on the side of my house with his gun. I talked to Chief Roper on Ron January Talk Show in two thousand and twelve, where Ron January, that chief, would you like to respond? He said, "No comment." I went to Fox Six, and they said, "Go to, the Fox Six teams, go to Luther Strange." I said, "I'm not going there. I'm going and talking from the council and the mayor before I go in the front." Somebody got to tell me what to do. I been down to the magistrate office to Rita Patton to get a, uh, no trespass. She said, "You got to get a lawyer to do this." I've been told that's not true. You take the last incident report and go down there to her. She can send him a no trespass to say. I was picked up in my house after calling so many times, one of the procedures they do when you call a police officer, after calling thirteen times trying to get some help. Uh, one of Patterson came with the man, the officer on the, on the beat at that day. I had gone my house from my house to rip it up. It's nowhere. I called in my order, go up there and get my order. Come back in, he got messaged me. Came in, whole bang of white gallon of white paint on my kitchen floor. I checked my clothes, black top paint all over my clothes. Took a knife, cut in my furniture. Last week, Lieutenant Finley came with one of Patterson, Patterson, whatever her name, and she took pictures of this. I know the police, they got rules and guidelines. They go for it. I went last year to the West Precinct after his son has moved down to headquarters. He's no longer there. Son got outstanding service with the police department. Been there about twenty-five years. Uh, they said, "Are you sweating?" And he said, "He's gone. Are you still having problems?"
Ma'am, can you-
They said, "Well, go to family court. You need an order protection."
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
But the reason I confronted the people, I want to go public, so when he do something to me, they can't say, "I am trying to get help."
Thank you. Next speaker?
Excuse me. Um, Joe, is it Kifer?
Mr., Mr. Kifer? Kifer?
Um, Lawton Higgs.
Mr. Higgs. Who's speaking?
Uh, I am, Mr. President.
You're gonna speak for?
Uh, I'm gonna speak for Joe Kifer.
Mr. Kifer?
Yes.
What about Higgs?
I'm sorry?
What about Lawton Higgs?
I didn't have him.
Okay, Higgs, maybe Higgs, I don't know. All right. All right, you're speaking for him. Go ahead. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Uh, Ladarius Hilliard, uh, six twenty-nine Tree Haven Drive, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one four. Um, first of all, good morning to the councilman.
Good morning.
Uh, we're here today, uh, for the, the minimum wage push. On the last time we were here, uh, we actually, uh, got a resolution passed, uh, from this great council that went to Montgomery to kill House Bill four ninety-five that would limit, uh, the power that you have to increase minimum wage here in the city of Birmingham. Thankfully, uh, with your help, uh, by sending the resolution to Montgomery, that bill was able to, uh, to be killed and committed and not even make it to the House floor. Uh, so that's a good thing. Uh, we come today, um, after sending you, uh, legal briefs over the last, uh, three weeks. Uh, we've come with a legal brief, well, two legal briefs, and also to ask you to enact an ordinance within the city of Birmingham to raise minimum wage to ten dollars and ten cents uh, an hour for your citizens who has elected you, uh, to the city council. Uh, we believe that it would, uh, help, uh, cut down on violence. The Bible says, "For the lack of money is the root of all evil." Uh, we believe that, uh, I'm sorry, "For the love of money is the root of all evil," but we believe that for the lack of money, a, a, a brother or sister do some dangerous things. So, we believe, uh, that this will help in various aspects, uh, of everyday life. And, uh, we've come with, uh, various different people from, uh, different aspects of life. Engage Alabama's here, Arise Alabama's here, uh, the National Allegiance to, uh, for America. Uh, they're here, and they're all standing behind us, uh, and standing with you, uh, asking for your help. Uh, we asking that you place this, uh, on the agenda for next week's council meeting, uh, minimum wage ordinance, uh, and ask that you would enact the ordinance.
All right. Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Uh, I mentioned Lawton Higgs. I don't know if he's here or not, but, um-
No, he's, he's, Mr. Hilliard spoke for them. Mr. Hatcher? State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Cedric Hatcher. Resigned at twenty-three hundred Skelter Avenue North. I'm here this morning just for a minute to talk about race in America. Race in America. Race come with violence that's been going on across this country, too. Hey, earlier on, that guy in that group of people, that so-called gonna get the violence stopped, they had a book they want you to go read. I'm waiting on Pookie or Ray Ray Junebug to commit all this violence and sell all these drugs and break in your house to go over to the library and read a book. I want to see the day they gonna go over there. I got a book that y'all all can read, right in my hand, called The Bible, and it'll stop some violence. It really would. If you just get into this book right here, Bible, Basic Information Before Leaving Earth. What about race in America, y'all? Birmingham should be the first place we should be having this conversation. I know we've been seeing on videos all over the country, just recently seen one. By the way, that guy said he ain't seen no race with the police department. I seen the police all day put his knee on a little fourteen-year-old girl back on the ground while little white kids were standing around. Even the white neighbor stood around, never said nothing to them, but grabbed that little girl and put on the ground. I thought a man also, also, don't even supposed to be touching no little girls. I thought a woman supposed to be called to the scene, but that ain't race. I got another young man was shot eight times. I guess he was just mad. He wasn't no racist. He was just mad at it, wasn't he? Yeah, when they choke that man on national TV, I can't breathe. They were just mad. They wasn't no racist. They were just mad. All this stuff been going on. He ain't got the nerve to stand there telling me ain't no race within the police department. And it's sad. We don't want this stuff to happen in Birmingham, y'all. That's why we need to have a conversation going right now, 'cause we don't want to have it. I got a tag around my neck that say, "Every young man ain't been shot in the back five times." Some of them been shot with a pen, five times, five. Life without parole. Yeah, we shoot you that way, too. Yeah, everybody ain't got no hood on their head with some holes in their ass. Some of them got a robe on. Some of them got a police uniform on, y'all. Let's wake up and smell reality, y'all. You know what I mean? Because it's going down, y'all. When it's gonna wake you up? When your child on the ground? When they grab your little fourteen-year-old little girl? You'll be mad as hell if that was your daughter. White or black, no matter what color you is. If that was your child, you'll be mad today. Did your child like that, slung on the ground? Come here, get your A over here. That's the way he talk to them church. And tell me, he was, he was mad. He wasn't no racist. He was a racist. Because the little white boy, he even said it. He just said nothing to me, and I had the cell phone in my hand videoing him. He said nothing to me. Let a man stand around. We got to wake up, y'all. We got to wake up, y'all. We got to wake up. Only one person can change a heart, by the way. The same person changed my heart? That's Jesus. You remember David? I'm in Psalm fifty-one, verse ten. Some of y'all go to church on him. He said, "Creating me a clean heart, renewing me a right spirit." I'm just a voice, y'all, like John in Matthew three and verse three. He said he was a voice, crying in the wilderness, telling people to repent, y'all. He didn't want the real voice. You remember over there in Acts twelve, verse twenty-five? He said, "I'm preparing the way for one greater than me, who I'm not worried of even lacing his shoes, y'all." Somebody crying out, y'all. Let's not all be caught up like the days of Noah, pouting and doing our polit- y'all know the word propaganda.
Wrap it up.
I ain't gonna break it down till y'all gonna push the button on me then.
You time, your time is up, Mr. Hatcher.
It mean political folks gonna fool you in these last days. It mean some pastors in the pulpit gonna fool you in the last days.
Your time is up.
Get discernment if you don't get nothing else.
Thank you. Next speaker?
William R. Muhammad.
William R. Muhammad.
Field. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is William R. Muhammad. My address is four eleven Loraine Street, uh, Birmingham, Alabama. Uh, I wanted to come before the council to share some information. Uh, the rate payers in the sewer case filed suit in Circuit Court in Montgomery, and we had a hearing yesterday before Judge Greg Griffin, asking for summary judgment on two issues. Number one, whether the Birmingham Water Works Board can contribute to the Sewer Defense Fund. And number two, whether Senator Wagner's bill expanding the board was legal. Our attorneys argued that any law, this is on point number two, our attorney argued that any laws specifically targeting one entity is a violation of the equal protection clause of the U.S. Constitution. Uh, the Birmingham Water Works Board has been in business since nineteen fifty-one. The Water Works was owned by the city, I am told, before then. From nineteen fifty-one, that's sixty-four years the Birmingham Water Works Board has been in business. The Birmingham Water Works Board has four intakes, four water treatment facilities, a hundred and fifty miles of raw water mains, four thousand miles of distribution water mains, fifteen thousand fire hydrants, fifty-one distribution storage tanks, forty-five pump stations, five dams. They have a billion dollars' worth of assets. I'm just asking the question, when did Shelby Blunt in St. Clair begin getting services? They didn't start getting services till a few years ago, I'm told. It's, we've had the Water Works for sixty-four years. It took sixty-four years to build up a billion dollar worth of assets. Mayor Arrington spoke to a group of people Saturday at a neighborhood meeting, and he said to them that he has documented that that same bill had been introduced thirteen times while he was mayor, and he got proof of it, and that he did everything in his power to make sure that bill didn't pass. Because in, what happened in nineteen seventy-nine, if they been in business since fifty-one, why all of a sudden in nineteen seventy-nine, when Arrington became mayor, it was necessary then to expand the board? I won't even take up your time talking about that. I just wanna say to you, don't be bamboozled. Shelby Blunt in St. Clair only account for five percent of the Birmingham Water Works business. Does five percent, should that guarantee you a seat on the board? If so, then I'm headed to McDonald's right now. A customer does not deserve to be in ownership. I don't care how many hamburgers and fries I done bought, that don't guarantee me to be in ownership at McDonald's. So I just wanted to present that information to you that we are facing what we feel like is a violation of equal protection. The city of Birmingham turned over those assets to the Water Works Board, and for anybody to vote in a law to dilute your power to a point and to identify only one entity, we feel like is violating the citizens of Birmingham constitutional rights. Because if we knew that would've happened, we'd have never turned it over to the Water Works Board in nineteen fifty-one.
Thank you, Mister Muhammad. And as he's, um, while he's still up there, I will say that I have spoken to the lawyer that, that has been, uh, working on behalf of the citizens, the rate payers. I have been in, in communication with him. There is a, um, conversation or discussion, mediation discussion that'll take place on the twenty-second, I think. Um, and he is recommending that-
Mister, uh, excuse me, Mister President, I, I don't mean to interfere, but that's kinda like not public influence.
I know, but he's recommending that the council, um, nominate myself and Council Tyson to be in those discussions.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And so, um, we need to, um, we've gotta, we don't have to do that this week, but I think we need to take some action on it. Mister Bentley, I guess you're, did, did you talk to Mister Rubio about that?
I, I just did today. He mentioned it to, uh, Justice Cook, and Justice Cook, um, recommends, as Mister Muhammad is suggesting, that, uh, we discuss this, um, in, in confidential privileged settings, um, and determine, uh, what course the city needs to follow.
Okay. So we don't have to, we can adjourn the meeting and go into a session quickly after this. You recommend we do that?
Recommend that you wait till next week.
Okay. All right. So we'll do that. Um, all right. Thank you, Mister Muhammad.
Thank you, Mister President. Thank you, counsel, for your support in this. We really appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you for staying on top of it. All right, um, we're ready for older new business. Counsel Tyson?
Thank you, President. PIC meeting will be held tomorrow on June tenth at four P.M. in the conference room D and E. On Saturday, the thirteenth, live on Showtime, is the heavyweight championship fight at the UAB Barto Arena. Dante Wilder and Eric Molina, gates open at three P.M. I would like for everyone, please come out and support this fight. It's the first time that a, a fight ever have been held in the state of Alabama. Let's show our support for Birmingham events. On June the nineteenth, nine A.M. to two, Princeton Tower Senior Citizen Facility. We will have four blocks blocked off. This is a event put on by the Princeton Tower Senior Citizen Facility, the West End Wellness Committee, and District Six. This is a health and wellness fair. The goal is to increase health awareness through screenings, education, promoting positive behavior, and choices. We are still looking for volunteers and vendors. The event is open and free to the public. You can contact Janet Graham at seven eight three thirty-two ninety-two. We'll also have, um, some vendors there that's looking for participants on environmental studies, uh, young women from the age of nineteen to thirty-two. Uh, they will get a hundred and seventy-five dollars stifling for participating in this environmental, it's really just a, a survey. So, uh, you can get that information once you come to the event. Uh, the Disabled Veterans of America, Chapter Four. Uh, we have, um, mentoring programs. Also, if you need any help filling out your benefit claims through the military, veterans of any status, you could be in the Army, Air Force, Marines, it doesn't matter. They are open on Tuesdays from ten to two. The address is two three eight Second Avenue North from ten to two. On Thursdays, they are open from six P.M. to eight P.M. The phone number is two five one seventy-four thirteen. I'm asking you to please come out. This is an opportunity of a lifetime. They have educational programs where you can further your education. They have programs where you can get your house weatherized, um, utilities assistance. It's just so much out there for veterans, young men. I, I heard you say that you was a disabled veteran. Please go down there. They have attorneys, uh, that's totally free, that will assist you. And on Monday, June the seventeenth, Gray Mount Neighborhood, um, will be having their meeting at the Smithfield Library at nine thirty. On Saturday, June the twentieth, North Birmingham will be meeting at the Tittysville Library at eleven A.M. That ends my, uh, no, hold on one minute. I have one more. There will be a candlelight, uh, vigil held on Thursday, June the eleventh at eight P.M. on the Green in memor- in memories of Greg McLean. You know, he ra- he, uh, actually died in a car accident. That's one of the UAB students. And we're asking for everyone to come out and also please pray for his family, 'cause I know that is devastating for, to lose any child. And also with the team, um, you know, just now getting their act together with the UAB, please, uh, pray for the family. Thank you.
Counsel Hoyt?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, Beavure High Neighborhood Association meets, um, on tonight at six thirty at Brown Elementary. Central Park meets, uh, association meets on, uh, Thursday at Fippen West Library, and that's at six o'clock. Um, again, just wanna remind you all, um, you're welcome to come to the reception immediately after, uh, this council, uh, meeting, um, is open to the public. So, uh, feel free to come. And, uh, just wanna remind you all that Man Up Breakfast is gonna be at the Crossplex this year. Be the first time we've had it. At, uh, the Crossplex is at, uh, seven thirty A.M. Uh, we got a wonderful panel of guests, and we're gonna honor some folk, including some folk who, uh, may be in this room. Uh, we want to honor them, uh, so, and, uh, asking that you come and participate. There'll be several different panels. This year, we've added women, uh, to the panel because, uh, we need to hear from the women as to what, uh, a man ought to be. And so it's free, open to the public. I invite each and every last one of you to come. Uh, you know, we celebrate Mother's Day, and we do well by, by our women in, in this world, uh, but I don't think too often we celebrate the men. And so it's an opportunity for us to celebrate, uh, the men in our community. Uh, and so if you've never been to Man Up, this will be our third year, third or fourth year now, uh, having Man Up, um, the Man Up Breakfast is an awesome experience when you got men and boys in the same room, and sometime not even a dry eye in the place. Uh, when men share their experience and boys share their experience and what a father means in their life. And so I just want you all to, to, uh, be aware of that. It's not just open to men. Uh, we want women. We want the children to come, so come. It's a free breakfast, and we want you to come and participate, and we, uh, almost guarantee to have you out there before twelve o'clock. Okay? Uh, we strictly about business, and, uh, we look forward, um, to the Crossplex, um, and wanna thank the mayor and, uh, Mr. Chief of Staff for, uh, making allowances for that. We certainly appreciate that very much, and we look for a great, great, uh, breakfast this year. Please come and participate. Thanks.
Counsel Lundy?
Oh, I'm sorry. June twentieth is Father's Day weekend, and that's the breakfast. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, my leader. Tonight, uh, in Pratt City, we will continue the city council budget hearings. Uh, we will be at six P.M. at the Bethel Baptist Church Pratt City, that's seventeen oh eight Spencer Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one four. Uh, we will be at Bethel Baptist Pratt City tonight for the city council's budget hearing at six P.M. All are invited. Uh, if you've ever wondered what goes into our budget, if you've ever wanted to have input into our budget, this is your time, tonight, Bethel Baptist Church, six P.M. Uh, also, Mayor Bell and I invite all residents and property owners of the Pratt community to come out and discuss, as well as helping the decision-making process regarding the next steps in the Pratt City plans, uh, on how we redevelop the Pratt community. So come out Monday to the Pratt City Library, and that's from five thirty to seven thirty P.M. That's Monday, June fifteenth, at the Pratt City Library, five oh nine Dugan Avenue, three five two one four, Pratt City Library. That concludes my announcements, Mister Protem.
Thank you, Counsel Lundy. Counsel Abbott?
Thank you, Mister President. Hard to know what to say with the president in the room. The Budget and Finance Committee meeting for, well, the next one will be held on Monday, June twenty-second, four P.M. in Conference Rooms D and E. Uh, submissions are due on or before twelve P.M. on Wednesday, June seventeenth. We certainly would like for people to get their requests in on time. The, um, community budget hearing last night at New Pilgrim was very well attended. The room was jammed. People were sitting out in the hallway. Some people stood up the whole time. So obviously, there's a lot of interest in the city's budget. So I encourage folks to come out. Uh, you don't have to live in the community that, that the, that the hearing is being held in. You can go to all four of them if you want to and have your say. So, um, as Mister Lundy said, the, the one tonight is at Bethel Baptist Church in Pratt City. I intend to be there. And, uh, Wednesday night is, the one is at Avondale Elementary School, and on Friday is, uh, no, not Friday, Thursday, Parkway Christian. So I encourage people to come out and hear about the budget and learn more about how your city is funded, and, uh, and ask your questions. I know people have questions. Uh, tonight, neighborhood meeting, East Avondale Neighborhood Meets at six P.M., and the Highland Park Neighborhood Meets at seven P.M. Obviously, I will be at the budget hearing, and so I will miss both neighborhood meetings, but, um, my thoughts will be with them. So, uh, thank you, Mister President.
Mister Protem?
Oh, and don't forget the heavyweight fight.
Yes, yes.
Um, you know, I'm not a fight person, but I do have to say that having the World Heavyweight Championship in Birmingham, even though I don't really believe it's a good idea for people to beat each other up on TV, still, it's a big deal. If you're gonna have it, it being in Birmingham is really a big deal, and that's this Friday, June twelfth.
The thirteenth.
Thirteen.
Oh, twelfth. Well, Friday's the way in.
Way in here.
Yeah, so they can look mean at each other. So, uh, anyway, but that's a big deal for Birmingham. So those of you who like to see people beat each other up, go.
Well, Counsel Abbott, that's one of my bucket list events, uh, sporting events, and I've been to a lot of major sporting events, but to see, uh, WBC heavyweight, uh, fight to take place in the city of Birmingham, uh, when I thought I was gonna have to go to Vegas to see one, uh, it's amazing. So we'll be Vegas for a weekend in Birmingham. Uh, all the high rollers come out and do what you do best around a fight. Uh, and I look forward to seeing you all there, and I'm excited about it. Deontay Wilder choosing Birmingham, his state, uh, to host this fight, and, uh, it's gonna be tremendous economic impact. Speaking of this weekend too, now, since we're on events, we've got Garth Brooks coming back. We got three sold-out concerts at the BJCC, uh, with Garth Brooks this weekend. So it's a lot going on, uh, in Birmingham. This past weekend, we had the Steel City Jazz Festival. We had the Slice Music Festival, and we had the Alabama Symphony, uh, performing three nights at Railroad Park. You can't, you can't tell me there's nothing to do in the city of Birmingham. So, uh, excited about this weekend coming up, and a lot of exciting events, and I'm moving quick, Counsel Lundy. Uh, summer, summer camp opportunities, line dancing classes, uh, Harrison Park for all ages, uh, seven to seven fifty P.M. on Thursday, Oxmo Valley for all ages from five forty-five to seven P.M. on Thursday, 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 Thursdays. I know Counsel Austin, you've been a part of those line dancing classes, so that's fun. And we have a celebrity, uh, in the city council office I'd like to acknowledge. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, um, Josiah Malik Adams is the son of Shelby Collins, who's one of our, uh, members of central staff. He's aged one and a half, and, uh, he issued to me, and I'm so grateful, he actually attends Calvary Resurrection, uh, Christian Academy. His front page, uh, picture on the Birmingham Parent Magazine, uh, this is Shelby Collins' uh, son, and, uh, we're just happy to have him. He actually autographed it at the bottom to me, uh, to Counsel Jay Robeson, and I will display this, but we have a celebrity. He's sharp too in this picture. He got a bow tie on like Counselor Hoyt, and he is looking good, and I'm just glad to see, uh, that Shelby's son, Josiah, is, is a celebrity, and I'm just glad to have my, uh, copy of this magazine, and we hope to display this proudly throughout the city council office. And, uh, this will go definitely in my office, uh, for reading purposes. So the Birmingham Parent Magazine is free. Get you one, and y'all, uh, go meet and greet Josiah. Uh, I have neighborhood meetings coming up. Counsel Lundy, I'm moving quick. East Brownville Neighborhood Meeting, uh, Riley Travellac Neighborhood Meeting coming up today. On Thursday, Hillman Park Neighborhood Association Meeting, and West Brownwood Neighborhood Association Meeting on Thursday, June the eleventh. We also have planning, a zoning committee meeting at four o'clock. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you. Real quick, we have our budget tours. The next one is this evening at, uh, Bethel Baptist Church Pratt City. Uh, Wednesday, June the tenth, Avondale Elementary School, and Thursday, June eleventh, at Parkway Christian. Um, we have, I wanna thank Officer Charles Lewis and Officer Erica Lofton at the West Precinct for providing our security today. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Some move?
Counsel Tyson had one quick, real quick.
Okay. There, there will be a, um, a here, a, a, a talk on the sewer hearing, uh, at the JCCO building tonight at six o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.